I'm calling to order the meeting of January 12th, 2021 of the Planning Commission. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the visions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the Governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The Governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance. The city has met all of the applicable noticing requirements. Members of the public may offer public comments by email to planningcommission@cupidino.org prior to the close of public comment period for each agenda item. Staff will share all such comments with the commission committee, subject to the time limits applicable. At this point in time, I will turn it over to Ray Wong, who is now back with us.
No problem. Oh, welcome, everybody. So let's do a roll call and then what we'll do is introduce our newest Planning Commission member.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Commissioner Fang?
Here.
Commissioner Saxino?
Here.
Commissioner Kapil?
Yeah, here.
And Vice Chair Wong?
Here. So yeah, welcome, everybody. Yeah, welcome, everybody, and welcome to our newest Commissioner, Sanjeev Kapil. And yeah, just want to quickly say hello. We'd love to have you do a quick hello and welcome, everybody.
Yeah, hello. Hi, everybody. I am familiar with the thing. I've been part of the Housing Commission for a long time, so.
Well, welcome. Well, welcome, and welcome for your first day here. So let's do the approval of the minutes. I think that's where we are. We've got the amended draft minutes for November 10th, 2020. Recommended action: approve the amended draft minutes of November 10th, 2020, and take a look at that. So Commissioners, please take a look at the minutes, see if you have any comments. I think this is the one where we had comments from before and made some amendments to adjust. So see if everyone's okay with that. Do we have a motion in place?
Sure. I move that we adopt the minutes as provided, amended minutes as provided.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Probably not, but if so. All right, all in favor? We'll do a quick voice vote.
Commissioner Fang?
Yeah.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Saxino?
Yes.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wong?
Aye.
And Commissioner Kapil, I will mark you as abstained.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, item number two is the draft minutes from the December 8th, 2020 meeting, and same thing, recommended action: approve or modify the draft minutes of December 8th, 2020. Give the Commissioners some time to look at if there's any comments. Okay, is there anyone who'd like to entertain a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the minutes as submitted.
Okay. I'm happy to second. Oh, Alan, you got the second? All right.
Yep.
And Beth, let's do a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Fang?
Aye.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxino?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wen?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kapil, I will mark you as abstained.
Yeah.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right, wonderful. Well, welcome to the oral communications part. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of this Commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. You'll see a digital counter when your name is called, and in most cases, state laws will prohibit the Commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Beth, do we have any items and any speakers?
We have one speaker who's raised their hand. I can unmute them. Vincent, feel free.
Wong, can you promote me to host mode as well? So.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Vincent, welcome.
Hi, Vice Chair and the Planning Commissioner, and my name is Vincent, and I have been a Cupertino resident for 15 years. I want to bring up the issues regarding the Verizon 5G cell tower issue, very specifically for the case number 317, which is on 10423 Chisholm Avenue. And I want to say that that application is violating multiple city small cell guidelines, and it is less than 500 feet from another cell, which is considered as a category three, which is the least favorite, and also it is only less than 20 feet from my house. And also, the location is really clearly visible from my bedroom, which is again a total violation to the guideline. So I'm really asking the city staff to really review this application carefully and really move the cell tower to some other location that really adhere to the guideline. And I understand that, you know, the FCC has a regulation and the city has to be forced to adopt the regulations. And however, you know, the Cupertino residents is really concerned, and, you know, and really the guideline is really our defense and for the protection of our, you know, Cupertino residents. And, you know, I want to say, you know, reviewing the application, following the guidelines, it is very important. And also regarding the guidelines, you know, I think our last meeting, a residence is proposing there is a three updates that your guidelines, you know, and I strongly agree on that one. And, you know, that should be 100 feet from the residence instead of only 20 feet. Since, you know, it is 100 feet from the school, but why, you know, only 20 feet from the residential house? It doesn't make sense. And also, you know, it is also the guidelines that 500 feet from only the same seller, only same carrier. I would say you should be, you know, for all seller, it doesn't matter which seller it is, it should be, it should be, you know, any, any, in respect to what the carrier it is. So I know it's a 500, and again, it is a very low bar compared to some other cities. So, I mean, we want to consider that. And the third one is really, you know, we should just give a three to four year permit, and so that we can review it again, because this is really a new technology and that people has a concern about. And so it is, you know, really need to, you know, you know, let it, you know, some time to have more data comes out and then, you know, and review it one more time before, you know, we continue on the permit. So I really hope that, you know, the Commission really look into the guideline closely and really, you know, make a sensible updates as proposed before, and really stick to the guideline when you review all the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. And can you repeat your address so that the clerk has that or the address?
It is 10463 Chisholm Avenue.
Which one? Newsome?
Chisholm, C-H-I.
Okay, just wanted to know. Thank you. Any other, any other comments from the clerk? Any other oral communication items?
Do we have another hand raised? Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Kapil Chabra?
Yeah, hi. My name is Kapil Chabra. I'm a Cupertino resident for the past eight years. I have a comment about the same 5G cell that Vincent just spoke about. I live right across the street on 10442 Chisholm Avenue, and Verizon, we received a mail from Verizon that they're planning a 5G small cell right across the street. Again, the street pole is clearly visible. It's right in front of my front door, very visible from my bedroom windows, and it is less than 500 feet from another Verizon small, another small cell that Verizon has acquired on Castine Avenue. So it is violating multiple city guidelines, and it seems like Verizon may be cutting some corners here. I am requesting the city to reconsider this application and relocate this cell to a different location. We have freeways close by, we have commercial properties, I think they might be more suitable for this. I further want to second some of the recommendations that others have made in terms of making sure that small cells are at least placed 100 feet from residences similar to the guidelines that we have for schools. And then, they are also, they are basically not allowing more than one small cell within 500 feet irrespective of the carrier. I think that's pretty much I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I know we can't discuss the use here. These are oral communication items. I do have a process question for our city attorney as to how these questions and what residents can do to follow up. What's the right way to do it, since we kind of don't have jurisdiction right now, I think, on this?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that's a city attorney question. Is there a way that, I mean, they've lodged their comments in the record in this meeting, perhaps Ms. Eben, are there other ways that the public can contact the city?
Yeah, the project manager that these concerns are being forwarded to is in the Public Works Department. Our engineer, Steve Pagan, is a project manager for the cell towers and the coordinator, and he is the person that I forward these kinds of concerns to. So I would suggest that people can send an email to the Public Works Department, and Steve will get it and he'll respond.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing that, and for any other residents that are out there that have similar concerns. And also, I would say, bring that to City Council as well, so that they can actually set up some kind of guidelines or forward those concerns as well. So, okay. Any other public comments?
We have one more hand up from Susan. I will go ahead, Susan, you're alive.
Welcome, Susan. Hit the unmute if you can.
Yep, she's muted.
Okay, Susan, if you're there, if you can unmute, go to the upper right-hand corner of your box, the three ellipses, click on that, and you can hit Ask to unmute or be unmuted. Hi, welcome, we can hear you now. Oh, not anymore. You've muted again, so.
How's that?
We can hear you now. Please go ahead.
I just want to reiterate what Kapil and Vince has said. I, my house is right directly, the same address as the antenna happens to be, and I just wanted to, you mentioned Steve Pagan. He, I did email him when I first got my notice from Verizon, and he forwarded my message to Jacob Olander, to a Verizon, I guess, a person, and I, I think he forwarded it to everyone on the council and everybody. But, so I don't know why Steve Pagan is passing our messages around when he should be, I guess, from what I hear from you, he should be taking it on. But in any case, I too feel that the antennas are too close to the houses, and especially my neighbors' houses, where you could just see it in front of, as they walk out or in front of their windows. And we do have children in these houses, and I have a concern for that. Why is it that the antennas have to be 100 feet away from schools with children in it and not from our own houses where we also live with our children? So that's a big concern for me. I believe it should be for all houses to be 100 feet away at least. And hopefully, you can amend the guidelines to do that. Also, I guess, oh, I guess that's probably about it. I don't know what my time is. Oh, one more minute.
You've got one more minute, go ahead.
Yeah, so hopefully, I don't know who else we should be talking to, but are you the main group that you, we should be talking to? Or is it the City Council? Or is it the, like, I heard the name Angela Tsui, who is the lead for mobile antennas and things like that? I don't, I'm not sure. But anyway, just hope you take all this into consideration. Thank you.
Susan, what was the address of the antenna located at?
10463.
10463.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Sounds like we've got a number of comments on this, and I think this is going to be a rolling set of comments. I will, I think it's important to also let City Council know, you can lodge your complaints here for the record, and then, of course, follow up with City Council. Sounds like there's some interesting comments about what's going on, but since it's not an agenditized item, we have to move on, unless there are other comments. Any other oral communications?
We do have one more hand up from, from Lisa.
Hi, Lisa, welcome.
Hi, thanks. So just definitely, I, the system getting in tonight was horrible, and I put my hand up and then it went down, and I didn't touch it. So anyway, I'm a little frazzled just trying to get in here. But as far as oral communications tonight, I just want to reiterate some things I have said publicly, City Council, and I will put this in writing too, but there are three agenda items I would like to see on Council's agenda, potentially. And we've all been talked about before, but I don't see them anywhere yet, so it's just sort of a reminder. And that's the housing bill discussions about taking action to protect what we can is coming that are just regurgitated crap from before, excuse me, and could pass. We need to protect themselves proactively as much as we can. There needs to be discussions about that, and worthwhile discussions, not just, oh, maybe, but really get down to the nuts and bolts, please. Then, R1, improvements to the municipal code related to privacy planting guidelines and balconies. Still think that is very important to be discussed, especially as lots may be split and that becomes more of an issue. And then parkland distribution, citywide, we now have 4,000 to 6,000 new houses via A-BAG that we have to provide, and so park equity becomes more and more important as we get denser and denser. And I really believe that there needs to be a survey of what, not of people, but of what's actually happening, where our residents currently are, and where upcoming housing elements are going to place more, and make sure that any parkland that we get is in the right places for those people, because it's not a state, a citywide thing, it should be an area thing. And that's been talked about, but nothing's really been done, I know of, to gather that data so you can make sound decisions in the future. And then, gosh, I gotta find what I wrote while I was doing this. Oh, I'm a little, I'm confused, because I don't think Angela Tsui is, has anything to do with the mobile antennas. She's our economic development person, so I'm not sure where that name came in or why, and I could be wrong. And let's see, gosh, how much time? 26 seconds, what can I do? I think that's probably it for now. Thanks. Don't smile, Alan.
Lisa, the master of three minutes. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, it sounds like we, once again, one more? Okay, excellent.
Jennifer?
Hi, Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. I just got back from Santa Cruz. I was like, okay, we've got a meeting. Anyway, it's good to see you all. Happy New Year. I'm really glad Lisa brought up the never-ending battle about the housing bills. This, if you all haven't been able to look at Senator Weiner's latest and greatest SB, I think it's nine and 10, 10, well, they are just outrageous. I think 10 is trying to get rid of the Coastal Commission. It's like, we're talking about how many bastions, and I know the Coastal Commission is
Like Verizon, maybe cuttings and corners here. I am requesting the city to reconsider this application and relocate this cell to a different location. We have freeways close by, we have commercial properties, I think. They might be more suitable for this. I further want to second some of the recommendations that others have made in terms of making sure that small cells are at least placed hundred feet from residences, similar to the guidelines that we have for schools. And then they are also, they are basically not allowing more than one small cell within five hundred feet irrespective of the carrier. I think that's pretty much I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I know we can't discuss the use here. These are oral communication items. I do have a process question for our city attorney as to how these questions and what residents can do to follow up. What's the right way to do it since we kind of don't have jurisdiction right now, I think, on this? So.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that's a city attorney question. Is there a way that, I mean, they've lodged their comments in the record in this meeting. Perhaps Ms. Eben, are there other ways that the public can contact the city?
Yeah, the project manager that these concerns are being forwarded to is in the Public Works Department. Our engineer Steve Pagan is a project manager for the cell towers and the coordinator, and he is the person that I forward these kinds of concerns to. So I would suggest that people can send an email to the Public Works Department, and Steve will get it and he'll respond.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for sharing that and for any other residents that are out there that have similar concerns. And also, I would say, bring that to city council as well so that they can actually set up some kind of guidelines or forward those concerns as well. So, okay. Any other public comments?
We have one more hand up from Susan. I will go ahead, Susan, you're live.
Welcome, Susan. Hit the unmute if you can.
Yep, she's muted.
Okay, Susan, if you're there, if you can unmute, go to the upper right-hand corner of your box, the three ellipses, click on that and you can hit Ask to unmute or be unmuted. Hi, welcome, we can hear you now. Oh, not anymore. You've muted again, so.
How's that?
We can hear you now. Please go ahead.
I just want to reiterate what Capil and Vince has said. I, my house is right directly the same address as the antenna happens to be. And I just wanted to, you mentioned Steve Pagan. He, I did email him when I first got my notice from Verizon, and he forwarded my message to Jacob Olander, to a Verizon, I guess, a person. And I, I think he forwarded it to everyone on the council and everybody. But, so I don't know why Steve Pagan is passing our messages around when he should be, I guess, from what I hear from you, he should be taking it on. But in any case, I too feel that the antennas are too close to the houses. And especially my neighbors' houses where you could just see it in front of, as they walk out or in front of their windows. And we do have children in these houses, and I have a concern for that. Why is it that the antennas have to be a hundred feet away from schools with children in it and not from our own houses where we also live with our children? So that's a big concern for me. I believe it should be for all houses to be a hundred feet away at least. And hopefully you can amend the guidelines to do that. Also, I guess, oh, I guess that's probably about it. I don't know what my time is. Oh, one more minute.
You've got one more minute, go ahead, so.
Yeah, so hopefully, I don't know who else we should be talking to, but are you the main group that you should, we should be talking to? Or is it the city council? Or is it the, like, I heard the name Angela Tsui, who is the lead for mobile antennas and things like that? I don't, I'm not sure. But anyway, just hope you take all this into consideration. Thank you.
Susan, what was the address of the antenna located at?
One zero four six three.
One zero.
Is a. Uh huh.
Yep.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Sounds like we've got a number of comments on this, and I think this is going to be a rolling set of comments. I will, I think it's important to also let city council know, you can lodge your complaints here for the record, and then, of course, follow up with the city council. It sounds like there's some interesting comments about what's going on. But since it's not an agenditized item, we have to move on unless there are other comments. Any other oral communications?
We do have one more hand up from.
Oh, excellent.
From Lisa.
Hi, Lisa, welcome.
Hi, thanks. So just definitely, I, the system getting in tonight was horrible, and I put my hand up and then it went down and I didn't touch it. So anyway, I'm a little frazzled just trying to get in here. But as far as oral communications tonight, I just want to reiterate some things I have said publicly to the council, and I will put this in writing too, but there are three agenda items I would like to see on council's agenda, potentially. And we've all been talked about before, but I don't see them anywhere yet, so it's just sort of a reminder. And that's the housing bill discussions about taking action to protect what we can that's coming that are just regurgitated crap from before, excuse me, and could pass. We need to protect themselves proactively as much as we can. There needs to be discussions about that. And worthwhile discussions, not just, oh, maybe, but really get down to the nuts and bolts, please. Then R1, improvements to the municipal code related to privacy planting guidelines and balconies. Still think that is very important to be discussed, especially as lots may be split and that becomes more of an issue. And then parkland distribution, citywide. We now have four to six thousand new houses via A-Bag that we have to provide. And so park equity becomes more and more important as we get denser and denser. And I really believe that there needs to be a survey of what's, not of people, but of what's actually happening, where our residents currently are, and where upcoming housing elements are going to place more and make sure that any parkland that we get is in the right places for those people. Because it's not a state, a citywide thing, it should be an area thing. And that's been talked about, but nothing's really been done, that I know of, to gather that data so you can make sound decisions in the future. And then, gosh, I gotta find what I wrote while I was doing this. Oh, I'm a little, I'm confused because I don't think Angela Sweet is, has anything to do with the mobile antennas. She's our economic development person, so I'm not sure where that name came in or why. And I could be wrong. And let's see, gosh, how much time? Twenty-six seconds, what can I do? I think that's probably it for now. Thanks. Don't smile, Alan.
Lisa, the master of three minutes. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, it sounds like we, once again. One more, okay, excellent.
Jennifer?
Hi, Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. I just got back from Santa Cruz. I was like, okay, we've got a meeting. Anyway, it's good to see you all. Happy New Year. I'm really glad Lisa brought up the never-ending battle about the housing bills. This, if you all haven't been able to look at Senator Weiner's latest and greatest SB, I think it's nine and ten, ten, well, they are just outrageous. I think ten is trying to get rid of the Coastal Commission. It's like, we're talking about how many bastions, and I know the Coastal Commission can be difficult, but how many bastions in California's infrastructure are we going to knock down because of the housing bills? I mean, yes, we want to put in eight plexes down in Big Sur on unstable ground. I mean, there has to be a limit to what we're doing here. The other thing is, the governor just rolled out three days ago in the middle of DC meltdown, like something called the Housing Accountability Unit, which is some sort of commission, I mean, some sort of a group that's going to be an HCD, which is supposed to force the cities to uphold the density, the high-density housing bills? Well, you know, I'm sorry, this is getting to the point where I guess somebody was, I mean, I've been listening to KCBS a lot. I was stuck in a, in a traffic jam on seventeen going over at one o'clock today. I listened to KCBS, and one of, somebody is complaining, they're saying one of the bills that got passed, it's not housing, is unconstitutional. I forgot what it is, you may hear it. Well, I think these housing bills are unconstitutional. Why is nobody looking at them? And this, this Housing Accountability Unit is completely a farce. We, it, okay, so they're going to put people on this, this board, and they're supposed to enforce the housing laws in California that none of us got to vote on at all? I mean, how far are they going to push this thing? Like, one of the, one of, one of the sports figures just made a comment on the radio about people, they think the public are stupid. Well, yes, someone else thinks the public is stupid, and it's beginning to be some of elected officials in California. I have great problems with this Housing Accountability Unit, because what does that mean, Carla? And that people on A-Bag are going to start suing every single city? Let's vote on it. This is, this is, this is becoming comedy, it's beyond comedy of the absurd. It's called having rules that are paid for by big money that no, nobody in California can vote on. I'm sorry, I, we're, we're going into Trump land here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and welcome back. Happy New Year. Any other oral communications?
I don't see any more hands raised.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Just to set the record straight, just to make sure everybody knows who to reach. Beth, I think you mentioned the name, and it's not Angela Sweet, just making sure. For the 5G, let's just make sure that's set so everybody knows who to reach.
Yeah, the Public Works Department is, is, it's one of their projects, and Steve Pagan is the Public Works Project Manager in charge of that.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure everybody has that so they're not sending it to the wrong individual. With that, let's go to our next item, which is public hearings. So actually, any items on the consent calendar, just wanted to double check. Any written communications? Make sure I didn't skip that.
We did have a written communication for item three that was forwarded out of the general mailbox yesterday. That'd be included in the packet tomorrow.
Okay, and that's in the packet. And then on the consent calendar, anything else?
Nothing on consent.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, let's go to our public hearings. Item number three. Consider modifications to the procedures for processing general plan amendments, known as GPA, applications to implement the fiscal year 2020-21 City Work Program. Items related to the quality of life, applications number CP 2020-003 for the city of Cupertino across the city. Recommended action that we're supposed to take is conduct the public hearing, adopt the draft resolution recommending that city council, one, find that the action exempt from CEQA, and two, amend the procedures for processing of general plan amendment applications. So let's start with the staff report.
Good evening. Planning Commissioner Eric Sona with the Planning Division. I'll be presenting on the item tonight.
Welcome back, happy new year.
Happy New Year. All right, everyone can see my screen, okay? Perfect. All right, so yes, this will be about the general plan amendment authorization. A little bit of background, the original procedure was adopted back in September of 2015. The idea was to provide for more orderly development by allowing the council and public to consider and comment on projects before they were going to a hearing for approval. This is, the idea here is to ensure more development, improve the quality of life, the procedure. So the idea is that the development could provide some sort of voluntary community benefits to mitigate impacts on open space, schools, traffic, that, that kind of stuff. The idea as well is to provide opportunity for early community input. So a big concern was the community wasn't being involved until the, the project was nearing completion. So the idea of the general plan authorization process was that you'd be involved early in the process. Another component of it was to avoid a necessary complex process. So the process, and I'll get into more detail about it, is meant to be kind of straightforward for, for the applicants and try to make it easy for them to apply. And then again, receive council direction early in the process. This is just to avoid any miscommunication from the applicant and the city. So this is, this was originally brought to council as a study session on, in July of 2020. Council did provide staff comments and direction on proposed amendments. Those will be, are incorporated into the draft procedures, and this was added as part of the council's work program for the 2021 fiscal year. So going into the procedure, so applications would be submitted once a year. This is new. Currently, the applications are allowed to be submitted twice a year. The applications would be submitted, proposed right now to be the third Monday of every January. As part of the submittal requirements, there are several items that the applicants are required to provide. So there's a site and architectural design, net fiscal impacts, affordable housing provisions, if any, environmental sustainability, the list of amendments requested, so whether it be height, maybe setbacks, or the, you know, one-on-one ratio units, what have you, voluntary community amenities, if any, so that's, excuse me, that's something that they could provide as well. Two new items are a list of potential traffic impacts and potential student generation. So the idea of the area is to know what traffic, we don't do the analysis of traffic until the project is formally submitted. We can just estimate potential impacts and then the student generation. That was a concern council has, how many kids are being brought in because of this project.
Eric, just real quick, the items that are asterisk are the changes, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Thank you for that clarification. Asterisks will indicate new items or updated versions.
Eric, will you be going into the rationale for the changes in terms of all the asterisks?
This was just essentially we took council's direction and put them into the ordinance. There was some discussion, and we can talk a little bit about that. And we can talk about the, the original intent of the GPA authorization. So for the procedure of processing a general plan amendment authorization request, there is noticing. So noticing, it's the normal noticing requirements that we have for projects, mute display ad, newspaper ad, site signage, but we also do postcards for any general plan amendment authorization. So let's go citywide to all the mailing addresses in the cities, so it's like twenty-something thousand postcards get sent out. A new thing that we are adding is planning commission hearing. And kind of the background of that was that the council didn't want to incorporate planning commission's thoughts into a project before they got to it. You know, these projects do go through planning commission for recommendation. So it was their idea that planning commission should be incorporated into the authorization process. After the planning commission hearing, the item would go to the city council, where it could be authorized or not authorized. If it's authorized, they would work on a complete formal submittal and go through that review process separately. If it's not authorized, they would have up to six months to resubmit their updated materials to, to the, to the city, and then another hearing would be scheduled and another noticing would go out. And the idea there was that currently it's thirty days where they can essentially come back with the changes that maybe council wanted. So this was to give them more time to make that and also give, allow for more analysis to occur on the city's end and not kind of rush these things through every time. So currently, this is, this section is completely new. So right now, when you are authorized for a general plan amendment, you're authorized in that, so you, you, you go and you make your application. If you want to make a modification to that authorization, there really isn't a process. So council, or we discussed this and wanted to incorporate a new methodology for this. So essentially, what it would allow is one application for a modification request. So you get one time to come back, ask for, like, oh, you know, turns out I didn't need ten more feet, I needed fifteen or twenty. Or I needed more units, or I miscalculated this or that. So if that occurs, they would reapply with the same information from the original application. And then noticing requirements consistent with what's discussed before, the postcards, the newspaper ad. Again, the idea here is that right now, if they, if they were authorized, they essentially have to start all over again and wait for the next cycle and all that. So this just gives them an opportunity to come back and go through that process a little bit quicker since they've been authorized. This is just a breakdown of the process that they discussed, so you're authorized or you're not, is really what it comes down to. If you're authorized, you go through our normal review process. If you're not authorized, you have to go through. You can resubmit, or you can wait to the next cycle, up to the applicant. So the legal requirement, noticing, so legal ad, place in newspaper, display ad, place in newspaper. We also updated our project website for all general plan amendment authorizations, sent an email blast to everybody on that listserv, sent a postcard citywide to all residents, all mailing addresses. Staff also presented to the Legislative Action Committee in December, presented the item as well. And so our recommended actions to conduct the public hearing and adopt the draft resolution recommending that the council find the actions exempt from CEQA and amend the procedures for processing of the general plan amendment applications. And that concludes my presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you, Eric. Let's move to the commission members, see if there are any questions about any of these changes, any of the slides, and see what the commissioners have to say, and then, of course, we'll move to public comment, and then, of course, back to any deliberations. So just for people following along, that's what the process is. Commissioners, any comments?
I do have one question. I'm curious, so I was familiar with this process when it was first being adopted in 2015. I'm curious, do we believe there to be a financial impact from the current process or the changes that are being, that are being proposed here?
Do you mean the financial impact of the, the application, like the new requirements?
A budgetary, a budgetary effect on the city.
Oh, so all applications essentially are paid a deposit for all staff time. So they, they give a lump sum where the city withdraws that account from staff time, and then any analysis that we need to do, so part of the analysis is a fiscal analysis that we send out to a consulting, consulting of the cities to review the project and determine any impacts and what financial impacts, if any, that project may have.
So just to be clear, you know, I think that at the time when this was first approved, when the process, I don't know, back then we referred to as gateway process. When that was adopted, there was a concern that many applications coming through the planning department simultaneously would get strained on the staffing. And so there was, I believe there was a component of the decision at the time that was based on a cost to the city. You know, and this is really a staff cost, recognizing that, recognizing the applicant generally is reimbursing the cost, but I'm just curious if that's a factor, if that's viewed to be a factor anymore.
Yes, sorry, I misunderstood your question, but we do include some analysis of how much staff time or how much planning time it would take for that project as part of the authorization staff report. When that's presented, we'll say it takes X amount of time from staff to process the application.
So do you believe that there's a difference, there's a difference between doing this once a year or twice a year?
It, it varies. In the July study session packet, you can see that the general plan amendment authorizations come and go. It's not like, there's not a lot or a little, it's one or two at a time. You don't typically get more than a few, so it's not too impactful at that time. If, if five or six came in, that would probably be a bit of a strain. One or two, we can manage, hopefully, as staff.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments from other commissioners?
Yeah, I guess my question is then, if it doesn't appear that there's necessarily a financial reason to go from twice a year to once a year, what was the, what was the rationale? What was the reasoning that that was recommended?
Yeah, I reckon, if I recall correctly, it was council's direction. And this was to kind of reduce staff resources and time. And the idea as well was that it, it was in part with the, the expanding to resubmittal allowance from thirty days to six months, is that you, you get that one shot, but you can come back in six months as opposed to thirty days to give you more flexibility to update your package and get that review.
But your, your prior comment was if there were more that were coming in at once, forced by having to come in once a year, wouldn't that be a bigger burden to staff in terms of working through those simultaneously versus spacing it out in terms of twice a year?
It would depend. Because you're authorized doesn't necessarily mean you're going to apply next month. It could take some time for them to apply to get their application. So it's really based off the complexity of a project. Everybody came in, was asking, oh, you know, I, I mean everything, but I need height or need hotel rooms or something like that, and it might be easier to process. But if it's something more complex, or I'm essentially writing the book, or rewriting the area, then it would take more staff time and more resources. It's largely dependent on the project itself.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't see the rationale or understand the rationale. Why, why go from two to one? If there's, there's really no benefit other than reducing the flexibility of, of an applicant? But, you know, it'd be interesting to hear if there was any other motivation that, for that, that, that made some sense. So, anyway. I noticed PC review, that, to me, that seems to make sense. Okay, that's all the questions I have right now.
Excellent. Commissioner Takahashi, anybody else with other questions? Okay, I do have a question for you, Eric. So the question here is, the, the change in flow, when something is not authorized, just to make sure I've got this down correct, is you can resubmit the minor amendments in six months, the difference is from thirty to six months, that's correct? Okay, and the city review, the modification to authorize general plan amendment request, that goes back to a city council hearing, which didn't happen before, and that's, that's the other big change. Is that correct in the flow?
Yeah, the, yeah, any request to modify wasn't clarified before, essentially you had to reapply the entire process.
Got it. So that, would that potentially make it easier for someone that's looking for a GPA?
I, I think when we were drafting that language, we were thinking more of, oh, it turns out that I miscalculated height log, or I didn't do the slope correct. And so that's where we're more gearing towards, but staff does not want to make that decision whether they can continue forward with council. We felt that it was best to go back to council for that clarification and for them to process it.
And what happens if I still want to reapply? Right now, it's a one-year wait, can I still do that? That's the one thing that was missing, so.
Yeah, you can, so if you wanted to apply, wait, I'm sorry, are you saying?
Reapply, reapply if I was not authorized, sorry. So if I go down the path, I'm not authorized and I want to reapply, you just apply it like normally every year, because that's, that's, the reason it's taken out is because you only have one shot a year. Okay, cool. All right, just trying to understand the flow. I'm looking at the differences between the existing workflow and the proposed workflow, comparing the two.
Can I expand on that? Just, just to be clear, previously, if you were denied at a gateway hearing, then you were, you could reapply at the next one, you know, nominally six months later or somewhere in that period at such a time when the, when the. at the next one, you know, nominally six months later or somewhere in that, that period at such a time when the, when the department gathered enough things to make a, a call to bring them forward. And then there was also a, I'll let you answer.
Yeah, so the, it, it, you would apply twice a year, essentially it was May and November. And if you're denied, then you can come back again the next cycle for that.
Okay, and then the other, the other part was that in the event you were, in under the previous policy or the current policy, if you were denied an approval, there, there actually wasn't a period where you could return with modifications, but it was very short, right, six weeks or?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's either six week or thirty days, but it was very
Okay, great, thank you.
But in this one, you, you have six months now, right? So you have more time to do that.
Exactly.
You, you, and that's up to six months or you to come back? Yeah, okay.
That's kind of the adjustment, it looks like. Commissioner Feng, you can, instead of having to come back and reply, you have six months to make the mods or something, so a resuminal.
That was from, but, but, but was that only for minor amendments? Or would that also include a, a reapplication for a change of scope of the project, less units or, or something like that, depending on the feedback from the first time through? Or is that only for minor amendments? I mean, I'm kind of looking through the
Yeah, it, it's, we say minor amendments, so I think the idea is more clarifying things that council needs one, like that potentially reduces the scope, not increases the scope. And if you're given that direction from either, well, probably both planning commission and council for a project.
Right, but, but, but adopting the new element would, if, they would, they would essentially have to wait for the next cycle. Because it's not a minor change, it would be a more deemed one. And who's making that call in terms of if it's a minor change versus a major change in order to become, increase the probability of, of being approved? I mean, that seems somewhat subjective, I guess is where I'm going here.
There would be up to, up to staff review by taking into consideration the comments received from council and from planning commission and, and if their project is meeting those requirements. And we're, we're not anticipating something where they're going from, you know, a hundred thousand square feet to five hundred thousand square feet. We're, we're looking at something that's going from a hundred to a hundred ten or to ninety, something that is, is minor in scope for the project.
If I may, one of the things, I'm sorry to interject, but a minor would be something like a one foot increase in height because of some sort of a elevation discrepancy that was, you know, found in the process versus, you know, the developer wanting to add a whole story to their project, that would be considered.
Right, I, I, right, I understand, except I'm, I'm talking about going the other direction. Somebody puts in an application, it's reviewed and it's not approved by the city council or planning commission because of some objection. It's, it's too tall. And now the applicant says, okay, well then I, I want to reduce it from three stories to two stories. That's a major modification. Does, does as written eliminate that from coming back in a, in, in the same cycle? Or do they have to wait one year and come back, which, I mean, you know, now it's a bring me a rock scenario?
Right, I, I, looking at reductions, I think we would consider that more minor. I think our concern would be things that are increasing the
Right, right, so I, so I would recommend you word it that way, that a change that is minor or reduces the scope. Because, yeah, so anyway.
Okay, I had a question and I want to step back a bit. Eric, I want to understand, you know, over the past two years while I have been with commission, we have made exemptions. We have been granted concessions like density bonuses and other things. When does something become a general plan amendment versus regular concessions? That's one thing. And I'll, that's number one. Number two, the question I had was typically what's the process which is followed by the developer or the owner of the property when they work with the city? Do they come up with a proposal, discuss it with the staff? And when the staff is satisfied, then they percolate it up? Or is it, does the staff doesn't have any much of a role to play in the, like, in the initial setting up the framework of, of, of the discussion? And I think that sort of leads to the last point about how does the six month versus one year change which we, we are proposing? How would you feel that would affect the processes and the discussion and the iterations on the refinement?
So I'll start with the first question, you know, the general plan versus concession. So general plan typically is going to be things like building height, scope of the property or major materials, allocation of potentially office space, residential, retail, hotel. That, that's really where the general plan gets a, a good chunk where we see the, the amendment is requested. The concessions, I think that you're maybe referring to is more tied to residential development. And that's something that's separate. That's a zoning, zoning allowance that's gone through the, the state density bonus hall. That's a different process that is, is separate from this. So in regards to
The process?
The process for, for the developers to reapply or resuminate, I think.
Well, I think in general, like, there is the official process where they come and present and we approve or we don't approve versus the discussion which happened between the staff and the developer. Because like, I, like the staff is the expert here and they often come up with the guidelines and will help define the framework under which this discussion will happen. So, and it sort of leads to the third question that, okay, let, what I really wanted to know, what would be the overall impact on the speed of the process? When we grow from say six month reapply to one month, one year reapply? And your thoughts on it? Because there's a lot of stuff which happens behind the seat.
Yeah.
By the time we get those thick packets which talk about everything.
Right, so from, from the city's perspective, you know, we, we, we had several calls a day about different projects. You know, the family to, to, to larger developments, right? And so we're, we're the subject matter, matter of, subject matter experts for things in the city. So we'll discuss with them the development regulations and, you know, our, our zoning and, and general plan. And we give them those regulations and they kind of formulate what they can do within that box essentially. When they go, you know, oh, I want to do X that's inconsistent with the general plan, then we tell them this is the general plan in the authorization process. This is how you're going to go through it. These are, this is the application and we, we guide them through that process. I guess the big difference between, you know, doing it twice a year versus one a year is just time. It's, it's only going to happen once a year. These conversations that we have happen throughout the year. They're not necessarily, everyone comes in, in January or everyone comes in November or, or whatever, or have you. They, they just happen sporadically and we have those discussions periodically to, with different developers and property owners to discuss the process and to guide them towards it. So it doesn't make too much of a difference because it's really depending on the property owner and then when they think they, they will be ready to, to develop.
Okay, thank you.
If I may also clarify, for purposes of the general plan amendment authorization process, staff actually does not have a recommendation in terms of the, what is being proposed. So a property owner or developer could ask for whatever they, you know, their ideal project is in terms of, you know, if they come in with a hundred and fifty foot tall building, that's the developer's proposal and this stuff has nothing to do with staff's recommendation in terms of, you know, come in with a hundred and fifty foot tall building. Those discussions do not happen. That's not our role in the general plan amendment authorization process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners, any other questions?
I, I have a question on this. So what is the objection to it? Let's say that you, you go through the, the planning process when you go through city council and you walk through the process and you kind of find it, okay, we will move forward on this plan. Now, you have a height, let's say, take an example. You have an elevated height of the building, which has an external impact, right? It has external impact in the sense that it can violate the privacy of the neighborhood, it can violate the sort of So my point is that what is the window for the objections which can be raised by general public or, or for that matter, anybody else after?
Yeah, so, so comments can be received at any point throughout the process and, and we'll take those into, into consideration. And the idea of having the, this authorization process is so that the community is involved much earlier in the process. And that the, that the applicant will, you know, well, well, the city will send out the, the, the postcards and the notices so that the people in the project vicinity are well aware of the project. And so that they can comment to staff, to the planning commission, to council about their concerns. And planning commission council can direct staff and the applicant to, you know, mitigate those impacts or to modify the project to, to address those concerns.
And is it a creative process or it is a one shot? Like you take the objections and address it in, in one, one go? And then you solicit the feedback again on the, on the modifications you made based on the objections raised?
So I can help in to that question, Kato. So what happens generally is this general plan amendment authorization is essentially allows an applicant to put in for what is called a general plan amendment application. So the first, the general plan amendment authorization and application is the first look that the community gets at a certain project that wishes or proposes certain general plan amendments. After that, a, an applicant applies. And once they apply, they go through the entire process where there's outreach, there's environmental review, all the technical studies and everything is done during that general plan amendment application process. And that is a, is a long process in which anybody can comment at any time. And, you know, there are comments accepted at certain points in that, throughout that process. Not, there, there are actual venues at which you can come and speak. But throughout, if you get an application, you can always send communication to the project manager to indicate what your concerns are. And through that process, you know, in, in most cases, you know, something is done. As you, in, in your example, it was about privacy impact. So there could be, you know, things done to mitigate those, such as planting trees, you know, potentially increasing the setback more, if that makes sense, you know, screening laws, other things that could be done to mitigate that impact. And so, so those are the kinds of things that, you know, happen during the actual general plan amendment process.
You're muted, Ray.
Any other questions from other commissioners? Okay, if there aren't, let's go to public comment and then we'll get back to deliberation, just for people to understand process. Who do we have with their hands raised?
The first person up is Jenny.
Wonderful, welcome Jenny.
Yes, thank you, everyone. This very interesting discussion, I have spent many hours sitting in the city council meetings and planning commission going, hearing all people introducing items into this, this process. And yes, I'm sure it's very laborious, but I did like the word that someone used, I think it was refinement. I forgot who that was, it was refinement of a project. And I think that's kind of an elegant way of maybe working these projects out. I've seen a lot of heated discussions between the city councils and developers and our planning staff at the last moments over the years when these projects are being voted on, amended, et cetera. But I'll tell you, I, I'm really glad to see those postcards come in the mail. Because, you know, in stuff, for everyone has been extremely hectic in the last couple of weeks. And seeing that postcard come in the mail and thinking, oh, yes, the city is still running and eventually will be doing this. I was really glad to see the postcard. And I'm glad to see that this, these items will be coming to the planning commission. Because I think that having our city commissions involved in different items are extreme, it is extremely important because we're getting more input from the commissions and from the public. It's more, it's, it's more time for the, that's the wrong word. It, it gives the public more chances to give their input about what is going on in their city. Especially with the Zoom meetings. I think Zoom has worked out really well, but, you know, maybe within six months, we'll be transitioning back into a hybrid Zoom in-person type situation. And I think that it's, the more voices we hear, the better. But I, and I do think it's important that we make sure that we have more parkland available. I'm just throwing that in there. If you look at Scott Weiner's housing bills, there is zero parkland discussion. And I would like, that is one of the things that the city does at the city level. They hear from the public about potential for needing more parkland. If, if any of these bills pass and we wind up with eight places on single family lots, we need to have more parkland. I don't want these bills to pass and we're going to fight real strong to make sure they don't. But if we wind up with them, we're going to have to demand that the state, that, that they factor in parkland. And this is the type of thing, the more general plan amendments, et cetera, more chances for the public to say, hey, slow down. We need, this is what we need to make things work in our city. Thank you very much.
You, Jennifer, and let's go to Lisa, I believe. Lisa, if you can unmute yourself, you are up. Just making sure I'm okay too, I've been having some technical difficulties, so. Everyone freezes, I wouldn't know what to do, so.
Okay, it worked this time, I think. Can you hear? Okay, great. So I guess first I would comment that I, I kind of remember, and I could be wrong, that one of the reasons for limiting to one application period per year was sort of the idea that, you know, you get a shot, it, it's not, it, it was to basically stop encouraging amendments to the general plan. Because if you only have one chance a year, you got to have your stuff together better. Or I think that was part of the myths, along with other things that Eric and others have mentioned. But I do think that was part of it. We don't want to be encouraging these amendments. So anyway, and what I would say about the whole community benefit phrase, once again, I'm like a broken record. It's something this community does not embrace because the trade-offs are so often not what they're supposed to be. And sometimes, quite frankly, don't materialize into anything for the community. And if you look back at the survey done in two thousand fifteen, early two thousand fifteen, and that was directed by council in late two thousand fourteen, you know, what do you want as far as building heights, building planes, this, that and the other, and community benefits? And if you read the fifty nine comments in there, most, many are similar to this one. Community benefits program has been proven to be a developer's benefits program. GPA should be rules and guidelines to be respected and followed and not something for sale. It is the city's job and responsibility to enhance city's infrastructure and fund these projects through proper venue. Expecting developers to do the right thing is naive and irresponsible to residents. So there's, that's a theme in these comments. And this survey unfortunately has not been taken seriously. It was one of the better done surveys that I had participated in the city. And it just seems like, okay, we did our job, we did what we were supposed to do, but let's just put that in a box and we don't need to look at it again. And that's how I see it. So that was the general plan amendment that the city was doing, right? And ultimately, a community benefit workshop that was supposed to be held for residents to participate in what that might be, what their interests were, was canceled because the results of the survey said they don't want it, we're not even going to talk about it. And the general plan itself, that term was stricken, right, pew?
And the general plan itself, that term was stricken, right, Pew? From everywhere community benefits was, something was put in its place. So to introduce community benefits and give them too much emphasis when they fail so very often in the amendment process seems wrong. They're getting, you know, developers have saw these housing bills now that are helping them get what they want and messing up with the residents and our quality of life. They don't need the city's help to bargain for something that may or may not come to fruition. And then they get no penalization for that. So I would just hope that, and parks included, among other things, that that's part of what they have to do anyway. So if they bargain for a park or a park on a roof that isn't even a park, it it's completely backward in the process. So that's how all I have passionately to say at this point.
Thank you. And uh, okay, uh, see if there's anyone else with any comments, questions?
I don't see any more hands raised and we do not have any messages in the mailbox.
Okay, um, thank you, clerk. Um, we will head off to deliberation. So, all right, back to the commissioners. Um, any comments? Questions?
I'll I'll start off. Uh, I agree in principle uh that general plan amendments should be an exception and not the norm. And uh the exception process should be, should not be rushed. And we should not also be encouraging multiple exceptions to the plan. Um, so uh earlier on, when I uh was talking to Eric, I was a bit concerned about how the six-month versus twelve-month uh aspect would affect developers. Uh, on further thought, I feel that uh one month, uh, a one, once a year where everything is well thought through and there is a public buy-in with, you know, informal meetings and so on, is probably much better than somebody trying to come in again and again, just trying to force an inch the way into things. So uh I am, initially I had had some concerns about the whole process, about the fact that it will take, you only get one chance per year. I actually realized that that's probably the best way of doing something which will build consensus and has a chance of passing uh rather than something where people keep on trying again and again, hopefully hoping for something favorable, even though the community is not bought in or the city council is not sure or the planning commission is not sure. So that's something I would say.
Thank you, Commissioner Saxina. Any other comments?
I guess I'll go if uh if nobody else wants to.
I'll go after you.
Okay, I uh, so I'm not, I've never been a fan of the gateway plan, of gateway policy. And there's a number of reasons for that. Um, so I'd like to at least touch on them, touch on them now. The first one, uh, during the uh, during the uh earlier, the clarifying questions, um, I had asked whether there was a fiscal benefit. And it doesn't sound like we believe there to be one. Uh, that's certainly not a factor that's being brought forth here. So I I would actually suggest that as this goes to the council, that there perhaps would be some thought on the part of staff with regard to whether there's a financial um benefit or disadvantage. I I actually believe this was one of the major reasons for the gateway process being adopted was that, you know, from twenty twelve to twenty fourteen, there was a uh general, uh, you know, the, it was a citywide general plan amendment um process underway. And there were many projects that were trying to move forward at that time. So you had, you know, applications at Valco, at the Oaks, at Marina, uh, the Hamptons. Uh, so there were many, many projects and many of them were very large projects, all kind of happening at the same time. So at the time, I think there was a concern, uh, there was concern about whether the staff, whether there would be sufficient staff or or sufficient staff bandwidth to oversee those applications. Now, I think one thing that people are aware of is, well, they may or may not be aware of, is that the cost of analysis, uh, the cost of the planning department analysis is borne, you know, is borne or reimbursed by the uh applicant. So this isn't something that taxpayers are not paying for the uh EIR. They're not paying for, you know, the architectural review or the site review. These things are all, you know, charged to the um, charged to the applicant and reimbursed, but they are directed by the city, which means that the city can pick the uh, you know, the party that they feel is best qualified to do this kind of analysis. And, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for neutrality rather than, you know, obviously, if the applicant was paying and was selecting the consultants that were were advising or, you know, coming coming up with findings, that could be viewed as, you know, as a, you know, an unfair situation. So I think that the challenge was that, given some of these very, very large projects moving forward at that time, twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen, I guess, that the concern was that will there be sufficient bandwidth in the consultants? And will there, will there be sufficient bandwidth in the department to be able to even keep those directed and moving together? So I think that was actually a major, a financial consideration about the capability of the department was actually one of the big justifications for um adopting the plan. In the time since, what you've seen is, um, this wasn't included in the mainstream report. And again, as a recommendation, I would suggest that you, that there be a summary of the uh, of the applications since, since the gateway process was introduced. Now, that was in the city council um uh attachment in our packet tonight. And you'll see that the projects that that came through there, with the exception of two of them, which were the Canyon Canyon New Project and Scandinavian Designs, all of those projects were projects that were, you know, they were uh participating in the twenty twelve to twenty fourteen period where um the new general plan was being put together. So, so I I would, I would definitely say that if the, if there was a motivation, if it is true that the motivation was a financial one or one that was to control the load on the department, that that be considered now as to whether you would want to modify or even keep, you know, eliminate this program. Um, if you have the capacity to handle this, then uh, you know, the actual the actual, you know, the kind of the reality of the projects coming through, then then I think that um you you want to drive the decision from that. I actually have an even greater concern. And that greater concern is, uh, I I think Commissioner Takahashi actually alluded to this. By going to a one-per-year um, uh, kind of uh, when you batch the projects and run them through once per year, what you're doing is you're actually creating kind of maximum um resource demand. Uh, what will happen is, in the immediate period coming into that, uh, there will be some amount of prep time required to put together the gateway staff reports. Uh, that all becomes bunched into one period now instead of happening across a year. And then for any projects that move forward, they'll all simultaneously start into the uh, you know, trying to get staffed up with uh consultants, traffic consultants, uh, you know, ER consultants. So I think that that actually will be a negative effect. And doing this twice a year, given that there are very, actually very few kind of uh, very few new um GPA uh GPA applications. I think that allowing them to happen once or twice a year, or, you know, I don't know, you, there was some question here about how often GPAs can be analyzed, you know, there's, the city is allowed to change its own GPA four times a year. But, you know, it sounded like applications actually didn't even uh, didn't even impact on that um, on the process. I think that what that really means is you want to consider just taking them when they come. And that will actually probably be better in terms of loading on the city down the line. So that's the, one way to look at it. One, one justification was that this was um a way to help, help keep the uh planning department from being overloaded or for being, uh, having a fiscal impact. You know, unfortunately, I think another one of the uh elements, and it's a little bit alluded to in the, in the, in the original justifications, is that this was viewed as an opportunity to maximize the negotiating leverage of the council in seeking concessions from the projects. And it's a little bit odd because, you know, I mean, but there's no, by agreeing at the gateway point, there was no, there was no assurance that you were going to get the project through. Certainly no assurance, uh, you know, of how this was going to end up or where you were going to have to, what what concessions you might have to make, uh, whether they are community benefits or whether they are, um, in what you intend to build. Uh, none of those things were obligated upfront. So what, what that kind of led to was something, and I think the most visible one example of this were, was on the Goodyear Hotel on their first application, or second application, when they came back, I I think they, there was a decision to ask for ten thousand dollars of benefit uh per room to allow this project to go forward. And it's sort of, it's a nice million dollars, I guess. Uh, but uh, it it's really not based on anything. And, and so I think that I would prefer to see less of that, although, you know, at the end of the day, there still will be a discussion around, around the, you know, there's a trading of if I would like to have greater height, then then there will probably be a cost associated with that. I just don't think it's particularly benefits to do this um in the gateway process. The biggest reason that that's a problem is that, uh, and my biggest complaint about the gateway process is that you're trying to have a negotiation where you're looking at impacts in the quality of life, you know, impacts of a project. But you're doing this now intentionally with this pro, with this procedure. You're doing this with no facts. Uh, if you're concerned, for instance, uh, to take one example, for instance, the Oaks has always had concerns about whatever I might do there, I'm concerned about the traffic impact because, you know, they they have limited access. You can only really enter on, uh, well, you can enter on two sides, but one of the sides is um basically a residential side. So that certainly, on one hand, the gateway, uh, the gateway process allows the public to say, I'm concerned about the traffic. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't let them respond in any kind of way that's, that's based on fact. What's happening is you, everybody's reacting to, I'm really concerned that this might be the case. But because they haven't gone through the gateway yet, they're not able to have an independent, you know, to have the city ordered independent study of what traffic and traffic mitigation would be about. So to try to have that discussion before you study it, really makes no sense at all. I think if you look at the, if you look back at the results of um, of the gateway process, I think that um, I'll pick three examples here, uh, which illustrate kind of the, some of the problems with uh, with, with the way that this process works. In the first one, we'll talk about the Oaks in Westport. Um, now ultimately, they they had the three gateway hearings, I believe. And, and they ended up submitting a project which was conforming, which didn't require GPA. But I I think when they were asking for GPA, it was pretty clear, for whatever reasons, I mean, it was just kind of not going to happen. Uh, there were concerns about, you know, there was, the original plan had an office building in it, or it had quite a lot of housing as an alternative. There were concerns about the height. Where we kind of ended up as a result of the, of not being able to go through and have an analysis beforehand, you know, before trying to make a decision by having the gateway hearing, when I think we ended up with with less housing. You know, there were versions of of uh Westport that were at two hundred and seventy, the smaller version, the one that had the office building, had two and seventy uh housing units, and the larger version had six hundred and five, the one that was only residential. Quite a lot more um uh residential space than what we ended up with. Now, the final uh, the final Westport that was approved is right in that same territory, two hundred and sixty some units, but but there's, you know, thirty of those units, for instance, were were assisted care, uh, you know, memory care units. So they're, they're not really, it's, it's actually quite a bit less um housing. So one of the things we yielded was less housing. We yielded yet less revenue to the city. There were concessions there that would pay money to the schools um to uh finance a shuttle, uh shuttle. So none of those concessions ended up happening. And then the, the part that I find the funniest of all is that I think that one of the huge objections to what was being proposed at uh at Westport was the height. So the GPA, the GPA application that came in, into the gateway was requesting an eighty-eight foot height. And the building ended up with no uh GPA at eighty-three. So if you were concerned about height, that ended up being ineffective at controlling it. Um, the Goodyear Hotel, a very similar situation here. Uh, the Goodyear Hotel happens to be in an area where the allowed height is forty-five feet. The original application was at a hundred and five feet, but they ended up getting approved at seventy-two feet, which is still way higher than forty-five. So if the, if the objective here was, if you were a, you know, uh, if you were formally trying to follow the general plan, um, that ended up not, not happening. Now, the council always has always has the right to decide, you know, yes, this is good, yes, no, it's, you know, good, not good, and negotiate in such a case. But in this particular case, it's, it's interesting. It's not clear if you were a person who is a believer in the general plan, then then this was a total failure. Um, you know, it is fifty percent taller than what was allowed there. The setback ratio is five to one. Uh, it's very close to the road instead of one to one. Uh, and the rooms, you know, they, of course, the allocation of rooms, uh, there was no allocation, so allocation of rooms was no big deal. And the part that I think was maybe the, I I know, most, maybe the most ironic part was that they were uh negotiated a ten thousand dollar per room kind of fee to advance into processing. Uh, and they ended up taking only half that money, basically because the developers said they didn't want to pay any more than that. So, you know, I I again, it's an interesting thing because of development, the historical development. If you look at the various things that were proposed there, I think that they made a better hotel. Hotels were generally a good thing uh in terms of the finances of the city. Uh, it's just why even, why even have had that, that gateway um application? And then I I'd say the last example is, is also an interesting one. It's the Kimco Hotel. I can't remember, Cupertino Village Hotel. Um, now, this one is an interesting one because this project from the start, from every, every time it came to the city, came as a GPA compliant with the exception of requiring the hotel allocation because the general plan didn't have the foresight to um, to have the uh inadequate number of hotel rooms available. I think that so in some respects, you could say that's good. That's good the GP, the general plan worked there, although I guess the flip side of that is that the concern about the difficulty of getting a general plan amendment in Cupertino, and this was already some history at that point, actually caused them to build, you know, they're building very, very close to the envelope, very, very close to the setback. Uh, there are opportunities when you're across the street from a, well, now empty, two million square foot office building. You could have made a bigger hotel. And that would have been not objectionable and a lot more revenue to the city. They actually paid ten thousand dollars per room in that approval. Uh, but we would have been much better off had they, you know, I don't know, uh, instead of it being four story, I think it's four stories, it might be five story. Instead of being five stories, if it had been seven stories, we would have gotten a a great deal of recurring revenue. Uh, so, so, you know, I I think what, what I worry about is that that the way that we handle general plan amendments becomes a discouragement to people to try, uh, people to try to bring projects forward, to bring projects forward that might be beneficial to the community. Uh, and that, that the gateway project, the gateway um process is actually one of the things that makes it the hardest. It's not something you do in some of the surrounding cities. Uh, and this is really not about the goodness of the projects. I think in all cases, and I think that the commission probably agrees, in all cases, where we ended up was pretty good. Uh, a lot of the places where we were starting would have been pretty good, too. Uh, I don't think that there would have been issue around trying to have, have that discussion, you know, the discussion around, well, do you want to have an office building at the Oaks? Uh, you know, do you want to have, what different kinds of housing do you want to have? So, so I really believe that we ought to um make decisions based on facts. Uh, so that means really, 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 really um allow projects to go through, usually, I I would prefer to see go back, see us go back to the previous process. An applicant um is going to have to come with her wallet filled with bills to get, to get through that process of working with the um, working with the city staff and the planning department to get to the point where they have something that can be a proposed to the city. That they can come, they can come at the time that makes sense financially for them. Uh, and uh, you know, the only thing that we're losing out here is that I I think the one benefit that comes from having the gateway was to have a public discussion way upfront about what was going on. And that's something uh And that's something, again, I suspect it's way out of the bounds of the kinds of things, recommendation we would make. But that's the kind of thing where had you instead said. You know, for a, for a, somebody who's coming with the application intending to ask for a general plan amendment. But they do need to have a public presentation about what they're intending to do. And that that is the first step of their public engagement as they go through the process. And then they, and then they go in and start having the city review. And then I, I think that, so what I'm concerned about here is that general plan amendments and this policy, that the policy changes here, you know, the restriction of going to one year. You know, I think that these, there's an attitude here that have, bringing forward applications and bringing forward projects is kind of inherently bad. I'm not saying, you know, you know, unquoted bad. I think that the problem is that if you want good projects, you can't, these restrictions make it hard for good projects to move forward as well. And that, and that is something that you really, you really don't want to do, particularly because we're in a market where we're competing with our neighbors. Who are much more interested in, in, in change and, and kind of reinventing themselves than we are. And that, that's actually okay. So the final part I would say is that, under any circumstances, I would be opposed to, opposed to the gateway process. And I would be opposed to tightening the gateway process. But I think if you look forward over the next four years at the challenges the city will face, what, what, one of the things that will certainly happen is. You will see the much, much higher Rena numbers that, that the staff has already told us about. And that will mean the way you approve projects and build things, if you want to try to meet that challenge, it's going to have to be very different. We aren't going to redo the general plan between now and then, between, you know, in the next year. So, so one of the things that will happen is, I believe that you will see. You will probably see residential projects coming forward that will be taller, denser, you know, less setback. These will be the things that it takes to make it work financially and what it takes for us to be able to, to meet, you know, even, even with the challenging Rena we have. If we even tried to say, okay, what's it take to get to half of what that remade? Then we're going to have to do, we're going to have to do something very different than what we're doing today. And what that means is those projects, as they come forward, for somebody to try to innovate and bring something new, they're going to be seeking general plan amendments. This, so this kind of process where, you know, I'd like to bring forward my, I'd like to bring forward my housing project today. I'd like to have, I'd like to have city discussion, I'd like to have people really understand what are the benefits, but I can only do it once per year. You know, these sorts of things, they're just extremely incompatible with the challenges we have ahead. So, you know, I, I've talked too much now, but hopefully we can talk a little bit more about, about some of the things I said. Thank you very much.
Thanks Commissioner Feng. I, I do have a question, just for clarification point, just to staff and for all the people that are watching as well. So a general plan amendment is typically something that's more of an exception, right? That's the idea of a general plan amendment, is that correct?
Yes and no. It's an exception when you're looking at height requirements or the building slope, that kind of thing. But a project like, Commissioner Feng pointed out, like Cupertino Village Hotel, met all the requirements in terms of height and, and the slope. But it just needed the, the allocation. So it's, it wasn't an exception to development standards, it was an exception to the allocation available to them.
The allocation available to them, right? And how often do we get general plan amendment requests? Like, let's say over the last three years, like, how many do we see?
There's not too many, I think, looking at it, one, two, three, four, five.
I want to say that it was less than half a dozen in the last four years.
Okay, so it's less, this is not.
The, the number of, the projects that went through the gateway process are in the city council packet, so you can, you can kind of see them there.
Yeah, no, no, I've read them there, I'm just trying to clarify that for everybody as well. So it's not a lot, it's not a lot of projects, right? So.
Yeah, but is it self-limiting? I mean, is an applicant going to say, why bother? Because nobody's, they're not going to pass it anyway, so, you know. I don't, I don't know if necessarily the quantity is indicative of how many there potentially could have been. Just keep that in mind is what I'm saying.
So what I'm also saying is the fact that, I mean, you know, if, if someone has a really great project and, and they're going to come up to talk about it, right? You still need to get buy-in, right? It's not like they're just, you know, we're not, not going to have, I don't think it's like, hey, look, I want to put a, you know, use this as a famous example, but, you know, I want to put a Costco somewhere. I know you're going to say, that's, okay, of course, right? So I want a Costco, or I want a big box store, right, whatever that is. And, you know, I mean, it's not like it's just going to happen, people do have to get buy-in, they do have to check that, see what's going on. I mean, you know, and if it really has a designation that's going to be changed or something, I mean, there is that input. But what I, what I do like, and I mean, I agree, like, it's not like this is one that we're getting lots of different, you know, like, we're not having like tons of projects coming through. And it's not like tons of projects are being prohibited because of this general plan amendment process. I mean, it doesn't seem like that, right? I mean, otherwise people would have, people were still going to approach you and say, hey, what do you think, can we do this? I mean, the real question is, how badly do we not like our general plan? I mean, that's the first question, is the general plan not, not useful anymore that you'd have tons of amendments? And the short answer is, doesn't look like it, right? There's some major exceptions that would occur for, for certain types of projects. And someone said, hey, we want to build an amusement park, you know, somewhere, and you're like, oh, okay, yeah, that, that's probably why they go through the process. So, but I think I'm hearing the concern, I think, on Commissioner Feng on your end, is, is really that it's the frequency, not having two? Or is it the rest of the process too? I wasn't sure which one was more important to you, right? The fact that we have one spot to come in, or is it two spots? And now we're going to one, and that seems to be an issue. I just wanted to know which one was the most important thing out of the 10 minutes of conversation.
Yeah, oh, it probably went much longer than that, but.
Yeah, that was more.
So, so I actually, I think that the problem, so the frequency. I think it would be hard for, to make a rational argument for the frequency of once per year rather than twice per year or four times a year. I, I think it brings almost no benefit. If, if there was a benefit of trying to smooth out the, the load on the department, on staff resources, then it will fail. If it is to encourage people to bring great designs forward, then I think that that will, it will fail in that respect as well. So I, I just, I think that this.
Why, why do you think it will fail? Like, if I got a great design, like, let's say someone says, like, I got a great mixed-use retail, you know, project, we're going to add like 100 homes somewhere, right? But we need it to be like five feet taller. I mean, like, I mean, I mean, we've shown so far that we've made all these exceptions, as you're making, making a point, right? Hotel-wise and other, rooftop, right?
The two, the two major exceptions were done without, without, you know, without discretionary approval, right? So Valco is not a discretionary approval, the Westport was not, you know, is effectively not a discretionary approval, right? There was no GPA for Westport, so even though they went three times trying to get it. So, so I think that what you see is that actually many things are turned away. I, I, I think that, that there, it's not clear that there's a benefit from what's happening here. I think that if you want to say, if you want to tell. You know, if you want to tell the owner of the Goodyear Hotel, hey, I'd like you to give me a million bucks before we consider, you know, consider your application. Then that's kind of a mechanism to do that, but it doesn't really do anything else very effectively. And in that particular case, he didn't pay a million bucks. So, you know, it, it's just not clear, it's not clear what the benefit is. I, I also would actually comment that the general plan is interesting because the intent of the general plan is to say, generally across the city, this is what we had in mind. That means, you know, residential areas have this sort of form. And that we kind of believe that the places where we're going to develop are in these spaces, you know, I mean, we'll identify these spaces on the map, right? You know, the intention here for the major, for a major kind of project, for redevelopment of, you know, a Valco kind of a space, or a PG needs space in the future. To talk about another one that will probably never happen, but, you know, that, that, those sorts of spaces. For those sorts of things to happen, rather than, you know, rather than try to, to, rather than to put on the city, let's try to guess at what we want to do there. You really want to say, well, I'm going to generally say, this sort of thing will be okay. And if somebody comes up with something that's really great and can demonstrate its benefit for the city, then, then we'll consider it and potentially approve it. We'll probably also modify it a lot. That, that was kind of the model that was supposed to be happening at Valco. What was happening was they had an idea of what they wanted to do. I think that the planning staff at the time were kind of like, well, this isn't going to happen this way, you know? You, you want to have a huge office, huge office component, it's just, it's just not going to happen. But rather than say no, it was sort of, okay, if you want to, on your dime, come forward and try to demonstrate why this will be beneficial to the city. We'll give you the opportunity to do that, knowing full well, the, the council and the planning commission and the council had the right to say, well. No, you're just not, you're not going to do that. Now, it does make sense upfront, I think, you actually mentioned, here's the example of, if I, if I want to build 150, 150-foot building. And it's just not going to fly, you know, 150-foot building at, at the Oaks, and it's just not going to happen. Yeah, there's some benefit in saying that upfront, you know? But, but, you know, the council could, you know, the gateway could say, hey, you know, this council doesn't see any way. That you can bring benefit from building something like that. Yeah, so there's something there, there's something there. But I don't think that, I don't think you need to have a formal gateway program the way we do to be able to have that conversation and to make that statement, you know? If you say, as part of the bringing forward GPA, a, a project that will require GPA, that you need to have public outreach. You will have heard, you will certainly have heard that message loud and clear at that point. The, the argument is really, okay, now I want to build a 75-foot building, and there it's much harder discussion.
I, I think for me, it was, I mean, there's so few exceptions, once a year is fine, if something's got some great project that we haven't even considered, I'm sure council will move it up, right? And then there'll be some kind of exception, and then everything else is going to ministerial approval anyways. So, I mean, like, you know, there's no local control or input anyways, so, you know, it's.
Yeah, I'm, I think, I, I would rather have a lot of groundwork done upfront.
Oh, I'll get back to you, Commissioner Takashi. Commissioner Saxina, let's, I think Commissioner Takashi is going next, and then you, so.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
I thought you already went.
Oh, you're good, you're good, Commissioner Takashi? Okay.
I'm not good, I'm, I'm waiting my turn.
Oh, no, 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 we're, we're having you come in, we're having you come in.
Okay. All right, oh my God. So there was a lot of.
Commissioner Feng went a long time, so we forgot.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, he brought a lot of good points, like, okay, so first, the general plan, the word general, it, it's right there, it's a general plan, it's not specific. It's the general form of the community that you want to see. There are always going to be exceptions because time goes on and things change. And when things change, the general plan cycle is so long, the general plan doesn't change until there's, there's a lot of things that need to be changed. So saying that because it doesn't conform with the general plan, it should only come once a year, that's, I think that's BS. I think that's, that's not a good process because you're, you're totally moving away, you're, you're, you're essentially discouraging development to the, like, the maximum extent by, by putting up roadblocks. And if nothing else, you're coming across as that's what you want to do. And so given, it has to be approved anyway, what's the point of making it even harder? I mean, it's got to be approved, it's got to be approved by now, the, the planning commission and city council. So you've got the, the gates, if you will, are in place, so restricting it to once a year. I mean, a really good project, there's a timing element to, to any project, the timing of the, the economic conditions and the timing of, of how willing is a city to entertain a project, right? And so if a really good project comes along and it's one month after the deadline, okay, I'm going to have to wait 11 months to submit that. So now I'm not going to do it in Cupertino, I, I'm going to do it in Sunnyvale, I'm going to do it wherever they don't have as restricted the gateway. So why would you want to restrict that, especially if there's no economic gain? So it, to me, going from two to one is just, you're just trying to send that, that, that next message of, don't even bother coming with a, a GP exception. Because we're, we're only going to listen to it once a year and, you know, we're probably going to say no. So, so let's just discourage development altogether. And I don't think that's the message we want to send. We want to send the message that we want to look at these at discrete points in time, okay, two times a year is what we've had, so let's stay with that. I mean, that's at least consistent with what we've done in the past. But let's not send this message of, of being more restrictive. I mean, flexibility, I think, is only to our benefit. Being flexible will allow us to be able to make sure we entertain and work with an applicant that we feel is a project that benefits the greater community. Because that's what we're all here for, that's what we all want to see. And so I just have a big problem with this going to once a year. Because I don't think it has any benefit and it's just another restriction. Let's see, so that, yeah. So I think that's pretty much, yeah, and like hotels, and, and like, the examples David brought up in incredibly great detail. Are, are good examples from the standpoint of these are projects that, hey, we want it, we want them in the city. We've, we've always felt like from a revenue generation, hotels were, were always underserved. And the fact that the general plan was a little short-sighted in that area, I think, has come up multiple times, right, in terms of the allocation. So, you know, it's, it's, I think the general plan is as a picture of what we think the city will look like at a point in time. But it should, we should allow exceptions because environment changes, economic environment changes, regional needs change. And so to limit it to once a year is, is just, it seems arbitrary and arbitrary to be more restrictive. And I think it's sending a, sending a message that, hey, you know, don't bother. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Commissioner Takashi. I have a question for staff, but let's go to Commissioner Saxina.
Yeah, I think it's important to also understand the way the process, anything like this works. It requires buy-in from at least some basic guidelines from the staff, from the community, from the various commissions, the city council. So it's not that the first time anybody hears about it, it's actually, is when it actually gets presented to the council or to the commission, to the planning commission. And like, one big challenge in the past has been that the community engagement and involvement and a buy-in was often seen as. Something to be gained at hindsight after the commission or the council says yes. And I would say, while this would involve some change in behavior. If the amendment is something big enough, or if it, if your project is something so big and so different that it requires a general plan amendment and it doesn't fit in. Then you are much better of getting those buy-in and discussions and public outreach done. Through the year and so that when it finally comes to the actual hearing, you've already lined up your ducks rather than just throwing something air in the hope that somebody will agree. So it will, of course, force a change in behavior, but hopefully it will lead to much faster formal process. Because the informal process has already built that consensus needed to get that done. So that's the way I would, I, I view it. And I think community involvement and community buy-in for anything which involves a change in plan is really important. And we should guide our developer partners to work in those ways so that, once we actually get onto the table. We have already dotted most of the i's and cross the t's.
So why does going to twice, once a year? Change that, because.
It's an incentive to get it right first rather than just throwing it out there, you know?
No, no, it's being restrictive, I totally don't agree with that, I totally don't agree with that.
I mean, you know, it, there's a whole bunch of engineers on this panel, so we don't do things by, you know, do, it's, the way you're successful is not to do things less. So you have under pressure to get it right, it is doing things incrementally. So you want the.
Right, more iterations.
You want to be very clear about what you want to achieve.
Agile planning? Wait, were you talking about agile planning in city government? Wait, what are you talking about there, guys? I'm just kidding.
Okay, see, there are two parts of it, there's Intel, whose chip, when it went bad, it cost them a billion dollars to recall everything. And then there is the modern SaaS thing which you're doing launching 100 times a day. So like, there are two different paradigms. I think the city is much more hardware than software, so I would rather follow the hardware paradigm than software.
Oh, good segue there.
Yeah, that was good, that was good.
As a guy who works on both hardware, who's worked on both hardware and software, hardware guys actually usually give us, give the software guys who like to tweak their code a hard time because that's the mistake, right? The way that you, the way you have, the way that hardware has been so effective has really been by sending it, sending, by working in a different mod. The way that you, the way you have, the way that hardware has been so effective has really been by sending it, sending it, by working in a different model.
A firmware, isn't it? I'm just kidding. Only in Silicon Valley will we have this discussion.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. So the, we, we have, everybody hasn't weighed in, right? I don't think.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Capil, is there anything?
Yeah, I think we need to lay down what is good and bad because I heard that word multiple times and kind of, uh, uh, it's not, it's, it's ad hoc. Saying something good and something bad without having in a matrix which define what is good and bad. And general plan amendment is, uh, is kind of, is a big, is a big change. So you don't want to, you want to accumulate the small changes and aggregate them and at certain point, you want to commit them. So it's important that, that, that whatever the changes you are bringing in, you have a background of defining its matrix that, well, this is how it is going to benefit the community, how it benefits the city, how it is going to be beneficial for economic sense. How all those metrics are, before we dive in into elaborate reports of traffic and environmental and all sorts of, all those things expenses, you kind of have to lay out what is the rough matrix on which you are going to evaluate this proposal. If this proposal doesn't look good, well, there's no point in moving forward and just, just move on to the next thing. So having it one year or twice a year, yeah, more times you can do that rough matrix equation, it's going to be beneficial. Uh, but doing a due diligence on some of the sorted out, uh, uh, projects which are, which has passed your evaluation of the phased evaluation of a rough metric. Going into the second one, you can just think of it as kind of, uh, uh, a long process and due diligence is required in that. It's a, it's a kind of a thing that, you know, somebody was saying that it's a SaaS and hardware. In hardware, you make a chip, chip costs a forty million dollars. Okay? So versus a, you can spend the, the software flow maybe every quarter. So depending upon how, how your methodology is set up for that. So depending upon the, the, the economic cost of each of these, you weigh the disease based on that. It's the same, same analogy here that you figure out on the, on the rough scale what this project is going to bring about and how does it lie up, lie up, does it have anything striking to our benefit? And if it is kind of a minor modification, you can aggregate that and make it, uh, make it a once a year kind of a, with all other modifications and do that. But if it's a major one, probably want to move forward with that. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. I, I wanted to ask staff before we go any further into this, whether it's one or two. If this was implemented as once a year, how much notice would we give developers so they know that this has, process has changed? So they know like what time they begin, right? So like, would this be effective immediately and we take only GPAs at like, you know, March, right, as, as an example? Like, has that been determined?
Well, it would be in effect thirty days from council approval if they were to approve.
So we have. And, but would we choose a date that would give them enough time to know that, you know, yeah, we're, we're changing the process, you only got once a year and it's June, right?
Right, Eric.
Oh, sorry, P.
No, P, go ahead.
No, so I was just gonna say, we do have an interested parties list on our website of people that sign up for general plan amendment authorization notices. They do comprise of developers, interested, you know, community members. And so we would send it out through that. We would also update our website to make sure that we have a website where we host all the information about general plan amendment authorization applications. So we would update that and make sure. Um, and, you know, we've already sent out, you know, twenty one thousand postcards to every, um, you know, postal address in Cupertino, letting them know that this process is being changed. And of course, you know, as developers come in, um, you know, they first talk to us in the sense that, you know, they have a pre-meeting to give us a heads up that they're going to apply. And so, you know, we basically are the first point of contact when they decide that they're going to do this. So while we don't receive very many applications, we do get, give out information about the process to many, many people. So we would certainly make it known when we talk.
And have we had any feedback from developers as well in terms of what, you know, of these changes?
Um, at this point, um, I, I believe the notifications have been sent out and Eric can respond to that.
They haven't received any additional.
Someone said, oh, my God, you're going down to one. We're not going to build here. Did anyone do that?
You haven't heard that?
There was an email. There was one email from somebody.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was, there was one email that was forwarded to the planning committee that had some points that they brought up regarding the process.
I, I think actually Ray may have asked, correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, but I think you were actually asking a different question than the one that was answered. I think you were asking about when in the year might this date be set, not when would this come into effect?
I was asking both. I was gonna get that as a follow-up. So the first part is we, we've done notice, people know it's coming, right? And the second question is like, do we choose a date? And let's get to that point as well.
I would, I would actually say that, you know, it's interesting, right? Because the two dates you happened to spit out, uh, June and March would both be dates where it would be unlikely, I think, that you would do, do an annual process in those times because of the budget. But, uh, you know, budget approval process.
Yeah, I didn't mean to do it that way, but yes. Sorry about that.
But that just, that does, that does raise a question, you know, if you set this, if you set this time to be in September, you know, does that, is that positive or negative to the, to the application process? You know, I've, I've no idea what the answer to that is, but, you know, I think that again, picking a single date, almost, it's just hard to imagine that would be beneficial to, to improving the quality of which you get.
And following down the due diligence, what, what have, what have other cities done in the past or in our local area? So that's just the last question I have. Uh, to staff, so.
Pull that up. I'm gonna let Q do that one.
Um, I, it is my understanding that Mountain View does have a gatekeeper process. It is my understanding, and I, I, I would have to confirm this, that that is an annual process that they have. Um, and Eric, um, maybe we can look that up while, uh, you know, while the commission deliberates, but that is my understanding. And Morgan Hill has a process as well, uh, which is also an annual process. But I do believe that they are, um, they are, uh, working on amending that process is my understanding.
At the time when this process was adopted in Cupertino, Morgan Hill was the place it was cited. You know, and again, that was related to the, uh, you know, there was a lot of building happening there. And so that was kind of causing a pulse load on the, on the staff. Um, I think Mountain View does have a gateway process. They do have a gateway review upfront. I don't think that it's actually, they're not batched or timed together that I know of, but, uh, you know, again, maybe that'll be something we can, we can look into here. And if, if I could speak a little, Commissioner Capil, uh, you know, one of you, I, I think you had a lot of good points in what you were saying. The concern here is that what you're doing when you go to the gateway process is that, let's see, in prior to the gateway process being introduced in twenty fifteen, an applicant could come to the city and begin to consult with the staff about what might be workable, uh, what things, what things were likely to pass, what things were unlikely to pass, uh, what, what kind of allocations would be available. Uh, they could do that before and even start into, uh, review, a formal review of their project. With the gate, with the introduction of the gateway process, they're unable, the applicant can't start that process until they've had a city council hearing. But the result of that, that effect is that, you know, you want to do due diligence, but this is actually forcing you not to do due diligence. Uh, you're not really allowed to go in and have, you know, have a, um, a test of the project, you know, a measurement of the project based on what the city views to be important. Because that's what you're trying to get yourself approved to, to go forward with. If this were a matter of the city having to pay for the evaluation, if the taxpayers were paying for somebody's evaluation of some crazy project, then that would, that would be a bad thing. You wouldn't want, you would want to have a gateway then to make sure that only rational things are going through. But in this process, it's the developer, it's the applicant that's paying for the, uh, evaluation. So if they want to squander their money on something that can't be paid, then it really just becomes a question of, you know, are you wasting staff time in doing that? Or is there an opportunity cost?
I think we lost Ray again. So are we ready to vote?
He hasn't, he, Ray hasn't really had a chance to comment yet.
It was about five minutes last time, so maybe a break?
Yeah, let's take a break. I would say that's true. We know he's having a problem.
Give it up to him to connect back up.
Yeah. Back up, yeah.
Can somebody?
So I, I have to leave this meeting at nine fifteen, so just letting people know.
Okay.
So we're gonna.
So we'll be.
Break for.
Everybody's back. Give people another minute. All right, so we'll wait for, uh, one more person. Okay.
Yeah, we all seem to be back.
Yeah, I want to make sure Beth is back and.
Oh, okay.
Deputy clerk side. And we got, we got Seth, so we're good. Excellent. So. And wait for P as well, so. All right, cool. Welcome back. Well, I was the one that left, so, um, welcome back, everybody. And let's continue. Any other comments from commissioners or questions? And I didn't hear, I, I'm sorry, apologize. I didn't hear when, you know, what, what, what that right date would be when we start. I don't know if that question was ever answered as well, so. Since I chose all the bad budget dates. Sorry about that.
Currently, um, as proposed, the draft says the third Monday in January. But, uh, you know, there might be value in having a more generic timeframe to say, you know, generally the first quarter of the year. But that's, you know, to the commission.
Okay, got it. All right. All right. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners and deliberation here? Well.
I guess, I guess I would just say, you know, um, in evaluating whether to adopt this or not, you really want to look at what do you hope to achieve. It's unclear to me that there's any, anything beneficial that comes from the change. Uh, and then you might look at what are the negatives? And I think that there are negatives to reducing frequency. If this is something, if we were getting, you know, if we were getting twelve of these every year, then, then throttling it, you know, there are lots of different reasons why you might consider throttling it. If you're getting, you know, it appears to be in the last four years, it would appear to me that there were two fresh ones that were not from the pre-existing period. And I don't think there's any reason to, uh, to restrict this or to have this, uh, have a, you know, have a discretionary decision made upfront.
Commissioner Fong, I was actually rebut in a, in a, I was, you actually took your same logic and actually came to a different conclusion. Like, if we had like twelve of them, yeah, we should have two points to come in, so you can actually space them out so staff could plan. Since we have so few, it doesn't, you know, like, we don't do a lot of these, so one, once a year makes sense. Um, so, sorry about that. It's, it's, I just thought, you know, like. So, sorry about that. It's, I just thought, you know, like, I mean, I mean, I wouldn't want to throttle. If we're getting like 12 of these, let's get a process so we can actually crank more of these out. It just seems like we just such, have such low volume at this moment, and, you know, for the foreseeable future, I think we've got lower volume than, you know, maybe, I take the same points you make, but argue it the other directions. I apologize.
I would actually argue, I would actually agree with Commissioner Takahashi. The problem is that this creates the appearance that the city is not open to looking. The fact that we have a gateway process when our neighbors do not already raises the question of, you know, well, people don't want to do things here. And the fact that you see all these lawsuits, you know, a lot of lawsuits and a lot of non-discretionary approvals speaks to that as well.
I would take a different approach and say that it's not like we don't want people to do things here. I think we want people to keep it within the spirit of the general plan, if they make exceptions to that general plan. For us to deliberate and think it through carefully and make sure that we have a good process so that we can account for it, right? I don't think the frequency is going to change that one or two in that direct regard, right? Given, given the low volume here. But, but what I do think is it does, if we do get higher volumes in some point, like, we want to be able to be able to plan, and I think the other provisions here, right, whether it's one or two, right? The other provisions are important because it does give us an opportunity to, you know, notify the public better, get more input earlier, and tell developers, like, you got a serious plan, please come, right? Well, I don't think we're against it. You got a serious plan, you want to keep within the community, we've set objective standards, we've got a GPA in place, and you've got a different view, and, you know, things needs might change. Like, for example, let's say EV adoption 2025, it's a mandate, right? And maybe we got to change things in terms of how we do chargers and charging stations, and we've got to make some changes there, right? Plus, it doesn't preclude the fact that City Council can change any of this four times a year. Like, they make GPAs four times a year because they're like, oh my God, we see a need, there's massive demand coming from developers, let's go make a change. So we're not taking that away either, right? They still have that flexibility from what I understand, so.
They always have the flexibility to do it. So what happens is if you, if you wanted to bring your application, the date was January, but you wanted to bring your application in February, there's nothing that stops the council from taking that up. It just raises the question about why, why you would have had the restriction to do this in January in the first place.
I think we can argue it both ways.
You know, I, I just, I have a hard time seeing the benefit of, the benefit of bringing it in such a structured way.
No, I think that I would...
Sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Saxena and Commissioner Takahashi, please.
Okay, so, you know, coming up to the point of the Goodyear Hotel, I think Ray brought up a very good point that the City Council can amend the general plan four times a year. So if something which is more like, you know, a lack of foresight or a lack of planning, but something like Goodyear comes up, I don't think that will be constrained by like this. I think when the amendment is coming from a particular developer because they have a vision which is in conflict with the general plan, and it requires more thought, I think then it's probably better to be slower and get community buy-in and work through that process rather than just try to rush, like, you know, just come in and hope that it passes.
Doing it two times a year, not meaning you're doing it any slower. Why do you, why do you always say that? It's slower. It's no slower. You're just accepting applications twice a year.
There is an incentive to line up your ducks.
I'll look Commissioner Saxena to finish, and then Commissioner Takahashi.
So I would say there is an incentive to line, to do things, to put your best effort and get alignment upfront. If you're doing it once a year, versus doing it six months, every six months, is the way I would put it. If I, if I were on the other side, I would say, okay, let me just line up my ducks and make sure this makes sense to most of the stakeholders, it makes sense to the city, it makes sense to the people. And so when we actually have gone through the, done the homework, then when it comes to the, the commission or the city, it's more about, hey, yes, I think we already did that, it makes sense, let's do it. Rather than something where people are sort of throwing and hoping that they are, they might be able to convince certain people to pass it.
But arguing that can be made for the approval process, which is unchanged here. But what you're doing is you're saying, you're saying that you, you don't want to allow the city, you know, to let the, to let the applicant go through the process of trying to get an objective set of facts that people could discuss. You're basically saying, well, you know, the best that could happen here is, and in fact, one of the Westport applications done this way, where they went out and did their own traffic study because they knew this was an issue, and then you bring it forward, and then you say, well, at, at the, at the gateway hearing, and then people say, well, you paid for your own traffic study, so it doesn't mean anything. Okay, well, the alternative to that is, they could have said, had the city do the review, have the city picked the, the consultant, and then, and then you would actually have something real to talk about when you, when you come to the application process.
Oh, actually, I'll go to Commissioner Takahashi to finish, and then Commissioner Feng, if you have anything else to add. But I'd like to energize the question to the staff to think about right now. But if there is a date that is actually more convenient for you from a perspective to process these, that would actually help with your workloads and streamline your workloads. Because there is some concern about, you know, how we're staffed at the moment. If we do get more, there might be certain dates that are less busy than other dates, and, and so just think about that. And we're going to go to Commissioner Takahashi, and then back to Commissioner Feng. Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, I guess I'm total, in total disagreement with Commissioner Saxena because we're still talking six, we're not talking about rushing the process. I mean, you might get a rushed process if you have to do it once a year, because depending on when you came in, when the window of opportunity for you to actually do things, and it's coming up against that one year, then you have to rush, right? So it's, I think it's the exact opposite. Giving people a six, two six-month windows, six months is a lot of time to get those ducks in a line, to get things fully vetted. So this once a year is, to me, is, is just, what's the point? Why? 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 And so I can't support that. And I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what's the path forward to get this? Is this simply a, okay, we do a straw poll, and, and we agree on these elements of the change, but there's disagreement on this element, and, and we'll bring it, let, go to the City Council with, with X agreeing with the one year and Y disagreeing with the, the one year. And just, I think we talk this to death, like, almost everything else we do. So let's, let's figure out our path forward and get it done. That's my recommendation.
I understand, we understand we're under some time constraints. City Attorney Seth, what's, what are we doing here in terms of the process so that everyone is on the same page? Is it just the up-down vote, and, or is it a recommendation?
Eric, can you go back over your recommendations from your slide? You can just recite them. You don't have to pull it up.
Yeah, I'm trying to write that.
Read them as well. Well, go ahead, Eric, sir.
Oops, he's mechanical. I'll go. So the recommendation...
I thought it was me, so go ahead.
The recommendation is for the, I'm going to pull up the agenda here, is for the Planning Commission to adopt or recommend that the City Council find the action exempt from CEQA and amend the procedures for processing of general plan amendment applications.
So I'm sure we can all agree on one. I think on two, we have a question of whether it's once a year or twice a year, just to speed up the process here.
Or zero times. I mean, you know.
Or zero times. No, 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 no. Now that is really exclusive.
Can we just move forward noting where, where we stand? And, and, and just go from there, because the City Council is going to take it, and they're going to either say, oh, yeah, twice, or no, we want once. So we're just talking to ourselves at this point in time, right? So let's, let's, let's try to be efficient with the city staff's time.
Okay, and related to efficiency, real quick, Commissioner Feng, do you have some, something else to add?
No, I was just going to say, I think that you, you were assuming that everybody agreed to number one. I think that everybody would.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that we would not have a lot of debate about number one. Can we all agree to that? Alright, we're not voting yet, we're not making sayings, okay? So we're focused on number two, and I believe the point of disagreement is a frequency point. And then I really wanted to ask the staff if there was a date that they thought was a date that, if we're going to only do it once a year, when it would be? And if we're doing it twice a year, what, what works is existing dates work, and that's why I want to double check.
Thank you, Chair Wong. So the, the way that it would work is, as proposed, applicants would have to bring in applications by the third Monday in January. And so after that is when the peer review happens on the documents that they submit, which is, you know, fiscal impact analyses, you know, even possibly the traffic impacting analysis, and, you know, just kind of have a, a very overarching view on all those documents. And then that is, that is presented, would be presented to Planning Commission and City Council, and that would happen generally in the quarter following the quarter in which they submit. So, you know, generally within three months after that time, depending on workloads and how staffing works and how soon we can get all the peer reviews conducted, is when those hearings would be scheduled.
So Q for you, is it easier at the beginning of the year in Q1 or Q2? So you like Q1, and that's a date you want to keep? I just want to make sure we make those recommendations and councils aware.
Correct.
Yes, I, I guess of my point, I, I just want to make a point on picking a date. To me, it seems, I'll just use the term unfair, to, to implement this and say, now, let's just pick that third week of January, when somebody was working potentially on the, the previous requirement of two times and thinking that there was another window in June, July, or whenever that was, and now that's been removed. So if, my, my point here is if the City Council decides to go to one time, that it, it, it take in the period, a grace period to allow, yes.
So there's a transition period?
Now, right, exactly. So otherwise, you're, you're, it's even worse. You're saying, oops, sorry, too bad for you. So that's my only comment with the, a date of adoption.
I'm trying to be efficient with your words, so. Okay, so it sounds like that would be our recommendation to find, if we only choose one date, let's choose the later date, so we have a transition period. Do we have a good consensus around that?
You're saying the later of the...
Later of the two dates, if we, yeah, end up in that cycle. That, that would be the recommendation.
I would actually, I would actually look at that as the first cycle to be no, no sooner than six months after the adoption of this, of the new. Whenever, whenever that is, yeah.
Right, right, right.
And, and just for the general public to know, like, if council decides to get something that was really urgent that popped in, they can also make the amendment changes because they have four times a year to do that. So it's not like we're restricting anybody here or making it harder for anybody to do anything. But we're actually giving developers a transition plan to, you know, cement the formal process. If we go to once a year, if we go to twice, we keep the two dates that we have.
Actually, let, can we get a clarification? I believe this is mentioned in staff report. The city can modify its own general plan up to four times a year, but when somebody comes with an application, that sounded like that, that did not count against those four occurrences. Is that correct?
No, general plans can only be modified a maximum of four times a year, no matter who.
That's hard and fast.
No matter, no matter who initiates it, okay.
It's hard and fast, but it has to be initiated by the City Council, I believe.
Yeah, I think I'd like to reiterate that, that anything initiated by the council is always available. And the goal is to get buy-in from the different stakeholders, and I think, I don't think that will change dramatically by this change.
No, I, I like, look, we're not trying to discourage development, like, I, I will say that. I mean, you know, if you are a developer and you're listening to this and you've got feedback, let us know. I mean, I think it's very important, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Definitely want your feedback on that.
How do you feel that it will benefit? How do you feel it will benefit in bringing better projects?
Oh, you're, are you asking anyone in the commission?
I'm, you know, we're discussing this.
Oh, any, anybody have a, anybody have a comment to that? I mean, I, I read the staff report, right, and, and I think it really was about...
No benefit, that's...
No benefit.
No.
Okay, you left an open-ended question, sorry about that. No, I, I read the staff report, and I, I agree with their findings, right? I mean, about making it, you know, cleaner and easier for people to understand what the projects are, making sure that, you know, there are cases where we don't compete with each other on community benefits. You know, public notice of, you know, is, is going to be streamlined a little bit, so people have more time to actually be part of the process. And, you know, we, we do get lost, somewhere around March and April, it does get a little confusing for us, you know, throughout the year, and as we get our way into June, then we've got vacations, so sometimes we lose people in the process. So I understand, I understand why they did these findings that way. But let's put it to vote, because we're running out of time for Commissioner Takahashi.
So let me just, just as a comment to that, you may remember there was actually a problem in one of the gateway things where the city attorney formed the, the resolution incorrectly, which would have required that all of them pass together or none of them pass, right? So I would actually say, and that was the reason for that was, this was, you know, not the city attorney's fault, but the reason was that they, they said there are three projects moving forward in this, in this, you know, this cycle of the process. And we didn't want to go through three times of public comment and three times of, of everything. So they combined them together, which turned out to be a horrible mistake when two were moving forward and one was not. So that's the other thing you need to think about. On one hand, you should know this at once, but the problem is, you might see, you might be seeing two projects then or more at the same time. Something that makes it much harder for people to understand and participate.
Okay, you have the last word there. Let's put it to a vote in two parts, one for the CEQA approval and get the comments. And the second one, I think we are just basically agreeing on the fact of frequency. Put a vote on the frequency, and that way we can save some time. So Madam Clerk, off to you, so.
I, I, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, did you actually state the language of emotion at some point? Do we have that on the record?
No, not yet. I'm not going to do that. So go ahead. Someone wants to move, go ahead.
Yeah, I move that we find the process category exempt from CEQA. I believe that's, is that what you're after?
That's, that's correct. I second that, and let's do a roll call, a vote, so voice vote.
Okay. Commissioner Takahashi?
Hi.
Commissioner Feng?
Hi.
Commissioner Saxena?
Hi.
Commissioner Kupil?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Wong?
Hi.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously.
I will leave this up to you, since Commissioner Takahashi, you have two more meetings in your term. How do you want to phrase it? You could say, I propose one, and we can come back and say nay, and, and then someone could propose two. Or we can just say, hey, we, we agree to everything except, you know, which commissioners actually prefer one or two.
Right, that would probably be faster, just from the standpoint of, if two or three prefer one, then just note preferred by three commissioners and two commissioners prefer two, or, or however. Or one commissioner proposes infinite, you know, whatever.
We're going to go back to 2014.
Yeah. So why don't we start with maybe, well, does it need to be a motion or?
Yes, it's a motion.
Okay, so maybe something along the lines of, I move that we recommend to the City Council, all elements in the staff report, with the exception of the frequency where there's a deviation of opinion.
Okay, and a deviation of opinion, yeah, and that deviation of opinion is...
Yeah, I don't know if we've had...
Let's do a straw vote. Let's do a straw vote now. This is not real. So who's, who's for two times a year? Alan was...
I'm opposed to adopting once, the once per year. So it's different than saying I support the...
Okay, that's fine, on the precision of the language.
Okay, okay, two per year, I, I'm for that. Anybody else for that? Okay, so we have two for two per year.
I'll go ahead and do that, because I don't think I have the choice of...
One person for two per year, one person opposed for one, and three people that are, or four people, or I don't know, it's going to go away.
Well, you know, effectively, I'm basically saying I don't support the recommendations, although I would be willing to cut out space for the, you know, for the frequency, although I would be able to cut out space for the other items.
Well, we, we could also note that, that Commissioner Feng feels that the gateway process as a whole is overly restricted. Is that adequate?
I would actually phrase that as not beneficial.
Not beneficial, okay.
Okay, so let's note that.
So let's just do that. So then, two, two commissioners voting for twice, and then if you support one, I'm going to assume both of Commissioner Saxena. So if, who supports one?
Okay, I, I support one.
Okay, alright, so, so two commissioners, Commissioner Wong. And then the third commissioner, or the, the fifth commissioner does not find the process beneficial. Is that the right wording?
For the purp, for the purpose of making this more meaningful moving forward, I will also vote for two times per year.
Okay, so, so we'll just, that, that, that's the opinion of...
Darn conditional logic here.
Right, of, of the commission.
No, I agree, I agree. Just making fun of it.
And then, and then, because, and then commission could weight that as, as, as much as they feel or not, and, and make their decision, so.
Okay.
Alright, so I think we're ready for a motion then. Does this sound right?
All yours, Commissioner Takahashi.
I move, I move that we approve the recommendation of city staff on the changes to the process, with the exception of the frequency in which case we have a deviation in the commission with two commissioners supporting the proposed one, moving to one time a year, and three commissioners proposing it to remain two times a year. Does that capture the essence?
I will second that.
Okay, but before we, may I ask one other question here? And that, that is, that is that in the red line, the, the last point in the red line was, I found it to be an unusual one. Um, it was a statement, the council does not in any way presume approval of the amendment of project, and kind of goes on. I don't disagree with that, although I think that that was redundant. So I don't know whether people had any feelings one way or the other on that. There was never any, I mean, in fact, I, there was never any implication that this was an approval of anything other than the ability to move forward.
I feel like that's a legal statement that was placed there by advice from the council. So I just want to make sure that's the case.
So, so it's sufficient, it's sufficient. I, I, let me just note that, note that for the record, I felt that that was, um, that was redundant. Uh, it was redundant, and that actually is an example of the kind of, the kind of addition that makes, that would make somebody believe that the city was generally opposed to, uh, opposed to taking proposals.
Commissioner Saxina, were you trying to add something or? Okay, no, he's, um, he's making, all right, cool.
I was having some mind, I was having some Minecraft negotiation with my child, so.
Um, okay, so on a serious note, we have a second. Um, is the wording okay with you? Oh, sorry, I got Seth.
No, no, the wording is a little confusing. I apologize, but the, the
Okay.
Because what's gonna happen here is you're gonna get everyone making an I vote, and so you're not gonna know which commissioner voted against the staff proposal.
Right, right, okay, do we want to know what, okay, so, so let me, let me try again. Um, I move that we approve the process changes as noted by staff with the exception of the frequency in which Commissioners, um, Feng, Commissioner, um, Capel, and Commissioner Takahashi, um, recommend two times a year, and Commissioner Wang and Commissioner Saxina recommend one time a year.
Um, that still has the same problem that Seth has, and so I would actually just break it up. So let's talk about the frequency separately.
Yes, so, yeah, so the alternative is that we would adopt the other parts of the measure.
Except frequency.
Brudgingly on my part, and then, and then we separately vote up in, you know, one or two.
Okay, all right. Do you want me to try again?
There you go, come on.
I move that we, we, um, that we approve the staff's recommended changes to the process with the exception of frequency. That's it, right?
Uh, yep, I make a second, and let's vote. If there's deliberation, please deliberate. Any other comments? And if not, let's go to a vote.
Okay, we ready?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Fang?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxina?
Aye.
Commissioner Capil?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wong?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Do you want to leave it there, or do we?
Um, but no, but now we need to put a note on frequency. So, and if we just add a note on frequency.
Well, no, I think, I think what we're gonna do is make a motion
Yes.
With this to approve the recommendation of one time per year, and then that, and that will have a vote attached to it. Is that?
Correct.
Is that acceptable?
Yep, let's do it that way. It's either voting against one or voting for two, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, except you want to be able to record what the, you, you may want to vote on both, because otherwise you're not gonna know what the preference.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
So let's put a motion for, um, having an, for the frequency to be once a year. Um, we'll get a second for that motion, and then we'll do the same thing for a motion for twice a year, and get a second just from a process perspective. Uh, and then we'll make those votes there, and then we'll be closed out on this agenda item.
Yep.
All right, so is there a motion for once a year? Or I'll just make motion for once a year. I'll make it easier, save some time. Commissioner Saxina?
I'll second that.
Okay, um, no deliberation, I think, here. All right, uh, let's put that to vote.
Okay. Commissioner Saxina?
Yes.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Nay.
Commissioner Fang?
Nay.
Commissioner Capil?
Nay.
And Vice Chair Wong?
Aye.
Okay, the motion fails. Two zero three, with Takahashi, Feng, and Capil voting no.
I move that we recommend a frequency of two times per year.
I second that.
Any deliberation? Probably not. Let's go to a vote.
Let me catch up, hold on.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Fang?
Aye.
Commissioner Capil?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxina?
Yes, no, sorry.
Vice Chair Wong?
Uh, no, so, nay, okay.
The motion passes three zero two, with Commissioners Saxina and Vice Chair Wong voting no.
Okay, all right, let's move on, I guess, and I think we lose you, Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, thank you very much, sorry.
But I'm gonna tell you, it sounded like you said it was three zero two, but it was three.
Two zero.
Three two zero, three two zero.
Three two zero, okay, great.
Three two zero. She said three zero two, three two zero, three two zero.
Yeah, okay, yeah, three, three two zero.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right. So, um, we have.
Actually, I'm going to, I'm gonna bail out too as well. I, uh, I probably have a whole, still have a whole nother day's worth of work ahead of me tonight, so, uh, I, I think, I had actually sent a message to Ben and, uh, didn't realize he wouldn't be here, so.
Well, we can actually make a decision here real quick. I mean, there's general plan annual review, and there's the city work program proposals. Um, and it'd be good to have everybody here, um, in that conversation. Um, can I ask the staff real quick, um, do we have, what's the agenda items or any kind of scheduled agenda items for the next planning machine, commission meeting on the twenty-sixth? Is there anything big that's coming down, or is it okay to push these out?
Yes, can you help answer that question? I know you're the keeper of all the, I believe there might be one hillside exception application.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not overloading the agenda items, uh, that way, if we want to space it out and make sure that we include as many commissioners as we can.
I'm looking it up now.
And so, and, yeah, and while you're doing that.
For the, for the twenty-sixth, we have a use permit modification to allow retail uses at a mixed-use development. And, um, the ordinance change for the vehicle travel, the, um, oh, my goodness.
Vehicle miles traveled?
Yeah, the vehicle mile travel, that ordinance was coming back.
Um, if I may recommend something, Chair Wong, uh, it is to maybe, uh, do the, um,
Work program?
Work program tonight, and then delay the general plan, um, uh, the GP and O report until next time.
That makes sense. Um, I'd like to do that as well, and I do have a question as well from a logistics point of view. Um, at what point do we lose three commissioners, um, and when are they replaced? Um, so, so I know what's going on for the February meeting. I mean, I might not even be here, right? So who knows? Yeah, so just, just sort of a planning perspective, that, that whoever is chair next or whoever is running the meeting knows what to expect, uh, for that procedure as well.
At the, um, at the end of January, we do have, uh, Commissioner Takahashi is terming out for his role on the commission. And Commissioner Feng is ending his first term, so he would need to be reappointed. And you are also ending your first term.
My half-term, yep.
Reappointed, yeah.
And when does reappointment occur?
We do have the potential of three new commissioners coming in at the end of January. Uh, you know, that's up to the city council when they do their appointments. I think they have interviews scheduled on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. It might be the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh of this month, but.
Okay, so we will be ready by February twelfth if people come through, and there'll, there'll be a full planning commission, uh, on the twelfth regardless.
Hopefully, everyone will have gotten their, uh, appointments done, the vetting through HR and that sort of thing, if need be, will be completed by then.
Okay, so we will have quorum on the twelfth is really what I'm trying, I mean, whenever that first meeting is on the February.
The first meeting is the ninth, and on that meeting, we will, um, do the election of the chair and vice chair, and and then, uh, move on to whatever other business is agendized.
Okay, cool. Just want to make sure we have quorum. That's the main thing. Okay, let's do work plans, uh, work program, and, uh, move to that item. So thank you, staff. And, uh, Commissioner Feng, you were saying?
I, so I think I'm still gonna bail out. Uh, I, I'm, I'm sorry for, uh, not doing, I, I, there is, there is some value, I may have some interest in doing this as well, but, um, uh, yeah, I really, I probably need to go. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you later.
Good night, happy new year. Okay, we still have quorum, so. And if I, if I freeze out, I will be here, I'll dial in, so, so we still maintain quorum, um, so. Okay, let's go to staff. We've got new business. We're gonna move item four to the next, next meeting, postpone that. Um, apologies for those who wanted to follow that, and we are moving to number five. Discuss potential city work program proposals for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. The recommended action, discuss and recommend five topics for inclusion in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two's city council work program. So let's take a look.
I'm sorry, before we get started, do we need to vote to postpone? To postpone the general plan item?
Um, that's what we did last time, um. That might have been a good idea, but now we don't have the other members. Um, I think it's fine if the chair, I mean, there was clearly agreement all around. I think it's fine if the chair adjourns that to the next meeting. Chair, can you just be clear about the date of that meeting?
Yes, let's adjourn that and, um, move the item number four, general plan annual review. Um, we will postpone that, uh, that continuation. It's a continuation process to January twenty-sixth, if that's correct, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, for the record. So, okay, let's go to new business, and let's take a look at what staff has for us for the twenty-one, twenty-two city council work program.
Yes, so, good evening, Plan Commission. Um, I just wanted to, um, uh, talk really briefly about the work program and, um, invite the commission to identify their top five, um, submittals of ideas for work program items. Generally around this timeframe, each commission is invited to submit, um, their, uh, proposals for the, uh, following fiscal year's city work program. Um, and it is, again, due to the constraints of COVID and, you know, uh, how many work program items already are exist on our current work program. Uh, it is requested that no more than five ideas be submitted. Um, if the commission wishes to support an existing work program item, uh, that it wants to continue into the next year, um, it needs to be included as one of the five items that they are wishing to identify. The commission doesn't have any ideas it wishes to submit, it is welcome to not do so, and, uh, expected that the commission's, uh, you know, proposals will be considered by the department head and the city manager when they do develop the city's work program. Um, and then the list of the commission's proposals will be provided to the council for their consideration when they review the work program, um, for this year. Um, and the final city work program is expected to be adopted by the council sometime in the March timeframe. So, um, with that, and, you know, I do have last time's work program here, uh, if the commission wishes for me to share my screen, um, to look at them, to identify their top five.
Yeah, I think that would be great, um, if people, um, have any that, uh, they've looked at, um, and thought through that they wanted to make a recommendation for. Um, when does that recommendation have to go to city council?
Um, we are, um, I think the city manager is the one that will eventually have to develop her work program. And so, uh, I think they are, uh, we want those by the end of this, um, uh, by, you know, sometime in the middle of, end of Ju, January. So which is why I was trying to impress upon the commission, uh, the importance of doing this tonight.
Understand, okay. Okay, so, let's take a look.
Not only the ones that we have, that is in the community development and planning, uh, courts. Um, I do want to also share that the housing division has multiple items on its, uh, agenda, um, many of which is supported by planning staff. Uh, the housing division is a grand staff of two planners. And so, um, there are several items on which planning staff also provide support. So I, uh, here are some of the items that the, um, housing, uh, division works on, uh, with support from the planning staff. Uh, one of the very big items that is in the upcoming, um, fiscal year through, uh, the next couple of fiscal years actually is the, um, the, uh, housing element and associated rezoning that is gonna have to occur as a result of the city's arena, um, which will be a big, uh, lift for our department, which is, um, very small. Um, there's, um, you know, uh, affordable housing strategies, which is something the housing division does work on. Um, there are some planners that help with that. Um, uh, you know, the, the ones on this page, the other ones are, are just stuff that, uh, the housing division has, uh, works on, uh, by themselves. Uh, we do assist with, uh, establishing pre-approved ADU plans. There is a process that's, um, kind of, uh, being set into place to allow people to, uh, submit, uh, ADU plans to the building division for pre-approval so that people can utilize those to build, uh, ADUs on their property. So we are working on that. Um, we also provide, uh, support to the housing divisions, uh, when, housing division, when we engage with, uh, affordable housing developers and provide technical expertise to them uh, for when they come up, uh, and want to, uh, develop property here in the city. Um, the other ones on here are in the housing division's, uh, courts. I'm gonna skip over those and move to the quality of life. Um, number three here, which is, um, the gas leaf, uh, gas-powered leaf blowers is, uh, the commission may recall, we already, uh, went through the process and we've already completed this, uh, item. Um, moving, I'm skipping forward to the ones where, um, planning is involved. Um, we are currently working on policies and related code amendments to regulate mobile service vendors. Um, commission recalls, we had a, a meeting with the commission and it made its recommendation it is going to go to city council at, uh, this coming, um, meeting in early, uh, January. Um.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, development accountability, where are still, um, COVID has kind of, uh, cramped some of our work, uh, staff, and so we're still working on number thirteen. Um, review and update of the general plan and the municipal code. We are still working on the first phase of this, uh, item. Uh, the general plan authorization process is one that the commission heard tonight. The sign ordinance update is another, uh, one that needs to be, uh, completed. Um, residential and mixed-use design guard standards, this is one that, um, is a fairly, uh, it's a medium-sized project and is one that we are working on currently. We have identified a consultant and we will be, uh, shortly entering into a contract with them, which has to be taken through council, so um, that is still, um, something that needs to be completed.
And just to be clear, okay.
I was just gonna say it will help, uh, um, uh, address some of the objective standard, uh, concerns that the commission and council have had.
And so our, our, our effort here is to really identify five. Uh, these have all been approved by, as work programs from the city council?
This is the current city council, the city work program. And so that, that is, it covers the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-one, which is from July twenty twenty to June twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so just making sure everybody's clear what that is, and, okay. So, one approach, um, and, and we have, we have to do this by the end of July, uh, end of January, sorry, so.
Uh, uh, yes, before, uh, actually, right around the, the second planning commission meeting is when we have to kind of turn in our stuff to, uh, the department heads and to the city manager. That, those deadlines are upon us.
Okay, I was gonna say that, um, it would be interesting to be able to capture the new commissioners' input as opposed to the outgoing one. Um, only, only because we're, we're the, um, we're outgoing, like, a, a good number of us, so it might make sense. I don't know how to bring that in, but it might be too late for the deadline? Is that what happens?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, in that case, then, um, we've reviewed what these are. Um, we can give input, uh, for those that actually have in, input. Um, can we do that input? Does that have to be a vote, or is that input we can send by email?
It has to be by, it has to be at this meeting.
Okay, so it has to be by this meeting, so, or by the next meeting, right?
No, because we have to have time to review what the planning commission gives us and then formulate documents to turn in to, uh, the city manager.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we were. All right, I just wanted to make sure we were inclusive of the other, um, commissioners. Okay, no problem. All right, well, commissioners, let's, let's take a look. Is there, uh, uh, are there any here that, um, that you're passionate about, uh, that you wanna put on the list? Uh, let's start with that. Um, let's just go down the line and as, as we're looking at the same time, I think the first one here, um, just to move the process along, um, was, let's see. There we go. Uh, RENA, study session for impact and requirement for the next RENA society, s- cycle. So that's the first one. Uh, it's under housing, uh, number one. And, uh, I don't know if anyone's like, super passionate about that versus the other ones. I think this is like one we don't have a choice anyways. So it's kinda funny, like, we're gonna end up doing it, so. Um, is that one of those things where you just assume that it's going to be okay and, like, people, we just have to do it anyways. It's mandatory, so. So, okay, so just for everybody to know that. Any comments from the other commissioners?
Yeah, please. I was part of the housing commission, so I've reviewed this stuff over there. Uh.
You sent it over here. No, I'm kidding, so. Okay, um, is there any one of these that you're super passionate about that we should think about or include in, um?
I do think affordable housing strategies is a kind of, um, is a, uh, important, uh, topic for this city specifically because, uh, uh, everything is, there is no land in this city and and, uh, the existing housing is kind of, um, mostly unaffordable for majority of the people. Uh, unless, uh, you have been established in this city for a long period of time. So, uh, given those two assumptions that, uh, there is no land and there is, um, existing housing is, uh, sparse in the sense that, uh, um, the, uh, there is a, some portions are really sparse of the city and some portions are really, um, are not so sparse. So, thinking about the strategies around that, uh, what are the options on the table for making it more affordable? Uh, for different segment of populations, maybe, uh, the newer generation, maybe the ones who are recently employed and, and, and so that kind of, uh, thinking about that, uh, is kind of, uh, I think is important going forward.
Got it, okay. Commissioner Saxina, anything else you wanna add here on the hu, in this housing section?
Not really. Thank you.
All right. Um, all right, I, um, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in, uh, number two, um, as well. Um, so that's something I would, uh, definitely think about, um, in the list of the five. So I guess we should just mark that as something to look at. Um, and let's move out of the housing section.
Um, if I may, i- if I may interject, uh, Chair Wong, um, the number two, it is important to note that this will most likely be captured by the housing commission on its work program, the five that they identify. Same in case of keeping your five, uh, you know, uh, um, broader, you know, whether you want some overlap with the housing commission's five, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, so that will be covered over there. Okay, something good to know. So, so Commissioner Capil, it's something for you to, um, consider as well. All right? So. All right, uh, I guess the next one really that hits us for community development is, is that number th, oh, it was three for quality. Is that correct? Quality of life in the, um.
That's completed, so we can skip over that.
We can skip that one, yep. Trying to figure out, do we miss any other ones? Climate action and update, does that hit us?
No, that is, that is the sustainability commission.
That's the sustainability commission, yep. So, just wanna make sure, all right, so. Okay, I guess we should vote for our own. So. So we're still working on, let's see here. The next one for anyone here would be, um, code amendments for mobile service vendors, which was in progress. So we've done that one. And so, development accountability, so. That's thirteen. That would be, uh, something that we should take a look at. Um, and that one's an open one, correct?
Correct.
Right, and development accountability is the fact that we've got a lot of allocated housing, um, in place, but, uh, question is, how come it's, they haven't been built yet? So, and what can we do to actually improve that process?
Correct.
So I, I'm for that. I don't know if anyone else is. Um, I think that's really important. Uh, that addresses a lot of the work that previous planning commissions have done um, and have not seen the benefits of, uh, more housing, uh, and housing stock to come into play. So that's something I, I'd be for, so. Any other comments from anyone else? Okay, um, we're already doing fourteen. Does that, and that's something like, I think we should keep, um, we're in the midst of that process, but do we need that for twenty twenty one? And I would assume that we're probably done by June reviewing that, correct?
Uh, there, uh, that is being considered in multiple phases, so, um, uh, you might have one phase completed in, in, by June twenty twenty one, but there might be others that would not be complete.
Okay. I would place one vote for that. I don't know if anyone else would?
Uh, I would, I would second it. Uh, uh, fourteen, you said, right?
Yes, fourteen.
Yes, this looks important. Uh, especially the zoning aspect of it.
Yep. Okay, anything to add, anyone else? Um, we've got the general plan authorization process, so.
Actually completed.
That should be done, right? That's what we're doing now. Um, sign ordinance. Okay, and then, uh, I'm looking at seventeen. Anybody interested in that one? For review, environmental review, review, environmental review committee, so.
Number seventeen was actually being worked on by the city manager's office, so that would not, um, uh, have much, well, I mean, they might have some intention of applying department's operations, but at this point, uh, we're not working on that.
Okay, and.
And then the last one would be number eighteen.
Yep, and that's one I'd be interested in as well, so.
Yeah, I will be interested. Yeah, I think it's, uh, survey is going out, um, city council on this topic to the general public as well.
So the housing.
We don't really have much to choose from. There's really only five here.
So I, 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 I didn't hear anything about the sign ordinance update and I just wanted to, uh, make sure that that was one of the five.
What, what is the, what is, what are we looking at the sign ordinance right now? Is it the sizing of the sign, the brightness of the sign, the, the placement, the?
Well, I think there have been certain concerns about, um, First Amendment, uh, well, not First Amendment, but, but, you know, recent, um, court cases or decisions on court cases and things that, um, relate to our sign ordinance and, uh, we have to amend our sign ordinance to, uh, reflect that. Um, additionally, I think, um, there are certain minor things that, um, you know, staff, uh, feels could be updated in the, uh, sign code. Uh, hopefully, um, without much, uh, discourse on it, which is related to gas station signs, you know, newer technology on, uh, gra, gas station ground signs, et cetera. Our code doesn't necessarily address that. And so, you know, so just some minor cleanup with related, related to that.
Okay, is the, uh, is sign ordinance, is, is it a, is it a reflection of a previous Supreme Court case or a previous state legislature, Supreme Court?
Uh, do you mean the, uh, changes that we're looking to, uh, make?
Yeah, so.
Yes, yes.
So like Town versus Gilbert?
Um.
Reed versus Town and Gilbert, sorry.
Reed, yeah, Reed, yeah, yeah.
That's the Reed case, got it. Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
So, and, 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 you know, other things that, that may not necessarily be up to, uh, snuff, um, of, of local, uh, not local, but recent cases.
So, do you have five items at the moment?
I do, so I'm, I'm gonna read them out, um, just to get consensus from the commission. Um, it's the, the RENA and the, you know, housing element update and the associated rezoning. And development accountability, review and update the general plan and municipal code. Um, the sign ordinance update and the residential and mixed-use residential design standards.
Um, any objections from anybody? Any additions? Uh, any changes? Oh, that's weird. The, the circles change on you. They don't stick, so.
Noticed that as well.
Sorry about that. Forgot about that. But just keep a floating circle. Just scroll to it, so, all right.
So, uh.
Uh, are there any objections from the commissioners? Any other discussion points? I mean, I think these are our five. I mean, we don't have that many choices here, so, um, if there's no, if there's no any, and going back to Seth, do we have to do a vote on this or are we good? Or is this just a recommendation?
Uh, I think Pew actually mentioned that earlier. Pew, do you, you, I think you said a vote is required here.
Um, yeah, why don't you, just to keep it clean? So we know that it was, that the commission had to read on this. That way we can.
All right, let's do that. Okay, so we have five that are proposed and I don't, I don't think we have any other objections or changes here. So for the purposes of doing it properly, um, I'll put a motion forward to make the recommendations for the five items. Pew, let's read the five items so we have that for official purposes. And then, uh, we will put that, and I'll look for a second after you read that, so.
So the five items I have is RENA and, uh, housing element update, uh, development accountability, review and update the general plan and the municipal code, uh, related to objective standards, residential and mixed-use residential design standards, um, sign ordinance update. Those are the five that I have.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Yeah, yeah, I second it.
Okay, second for Commissioner Capil. All right, uh, any discussion? Okay, let's put it to a vote.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Saxina?
Yep.
Commissioner Capil?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, two with Takahashi and Feng absent.
Okay, um, with that, uh, we are done with, uh, item number five on the agenda. And, uh, any staff and commission reports?
Do not have any staff reports at this time.
Um, any commission reports? Okay, um, I just have one comment. Uh, welcome to our new planning commissioner, uh, Sanjeev. Uh, welcome, uh, to the planning commission.
Welcome.
So, uh, whether I'm here or not in two weeks, uh, will be different. We'll find out. But, uh, you know, it's wonderful to have you here and, uh, welcome to the planning commission. Uh, with that, uh, if there's no other items, uh, this, we've adjourned today's January twelfth planning commission meeting. And, uh, thank you all for attending. And of course, you can watch the live replay on the Cupertino website, so, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Wait a second. Do you know who I am?
Julia.
Hi. I just wanted to talk to you about what happened with those two girls in eighth grade.
Oh, yeah.
That one day at PE when they were like yelling at me and then you just linked arms with me. I don't think you know how much like that helped me, cuz like, I finally, like, knew that I had somebody.